Ms. Ma.
Yeah.
Councilmember Burns is not here yet. Councilmember Severdon.
Here.
Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Rogers.
Here.
Councilmember, I mean Mayor Biss.
Here. We have a quorum present and are prepared to do our work for the morning. Whoever's got the meeting on their computer, if you could turn it down. So we're here to. Yeah, got it. Okay, we're here to engage in a kind of initial orientation session for all of us, and I think particularly for new council members. The goal is to work through this ambitious agenda by, before the, by noon. So we'll just get going immediately. The first item on the agenda is public comment. No one is seeking to get a public comment this morning. So we move on to the next item on the agenda orientation. And let me hand it over to our corporation counsel.
Good morning, everyone. For the record, my name is Alex Ruggie. I'm the city's corporation counsel. Thank you for spending Saturday morning with us here today. I will attempt to be brief. I have a lot to cover. I have provided an opportunity for questions throughout. But if you have anything that comes up during the presentation, please feel free to interrupt me and ask your question. So we're going to start with a brief overview of the Open Meetings Act, the Freedom of Information Act, and Robert's Rules of Order. So we'll start with the Open Meetings Act, which is commonly referred to as OMA. So of course, the purpose of OMA and the Freedom of Information Act or FOIA is to promote transparency and openness to government, including local government. OMA is designed to ensure that the actions of the public bodies are conducted in the open through public meetings and that the public can observe the deliberations of the public body. The basic requirements of OMA that we all must adhere to and why we offered an opportunity for public comment this morning and why we're all here, you all on the dais and us in an open meeting, is that our meetings are open to the public and we tell everyone why we're here. So there is a requirement under OMA to post the agenda for all meetings 48 hours in advance. So the city of Evanston always ensures that the agendas are posted in that time. We also ensure that the time, place, and subject manner is included in those agendas. Now, what is a public body that's covered under OMA? Obviously, the city council is the main public body of the city of Evanston, and that is covered. Other public bodies that are covered under OMA include boards, commissions, and committees and subcommittees of the city council. Throughout the state, other entities that are covered by OMA include the state of Illinois, counties, townships, villages, or incorporated towns, school districts, and then all municipal corporations. Now, what is a meeting as defined under OMA? A meeting is defined as having a gathering of a majority of quorum to discuss public business. So why is this important? It's important because we want to ensure that the public body avoids having an official meeting under OMA on accident. So this can occur in a couple of different scenarios. One, where a majority of the quorum of any board attends another meeting or another function, or via email. So we just want to ensure that, I know the city council's always worked previously to ensure that no more than a majority of the quorum is present at an event. And if they are, we ensure that, you know, discussions aren't had by that majority of quorum. We kind of, you know, space out to avoid the appearance of an OMA violation. So majority of quorum, I have a few examples up here. So a seven-member board, quorum is four, and a majority of the quorum is three. A five-member board is specifically called out in OMA, and a majority of the quorum is three for a five-member board. One other requirement that's not included in OMA that the city generally does is we provide a packet in addition to the agenda. That's not required under OMA. It's something that the city does above and beyond to increase transparency. It's not required, but we do it for all of our boards, commissions, and committees. And just to specify, the city council rules state that a quorum of the city council is six members. So a majority of the quorum of the city council is four. Logistics. Under OMA, it requires certain logistics to be open to the public. So the public body must hold meetings that are a specific time and place that's convenient and open to the public. Brief example, we couldn't have a board meeting in someone's home as the public would not feel welcome there. And just so you all know, any public meeting can be recorded by tape, film, or other means by anyone. Yes. Yes. Award meeting, I would just say, it's, it's public. There's no expectation of privacy in award meeting. So it doesn't count under OMA. But because it's a meeting of the public in public, there's no expectation of privacy and it can be recorded. Same as, you know, if people are in the hallway milling about or out on the sidewalk, they can be recorded. Member deliberations. So informal gatherings, I talked.
But just to emphasize, the, a board meeting is not a meeting in this sense and is not subject to all the rest of the requirements, like the 48-hours notice and posting the agenda and minutes and all that stuff.
Correct. Yeah, absolutely. The, the ward meeting is not subject to OMA, but it can be recorded.
One, one aside, when I have my ward meetings, I typically try to record the whole thing. I also tell people, hey, we're recording this for people who can't make it. And then I also specifically have a time when I cut it off and say, if there's anyone who is not comfortable with this being, you know, your question's being recorded, just, we have like a hard stop, so.
Councilmember Kelly.
Sorry. So a question regarding the packets. So according to what you said, then, nothing would preclude adding items to a packet, like 24 hours in advance, since they aren't required? Is that correct?
So you can't add an item to the agenda, but you could add an additional item to the packet?
Packet.
Yes.
In less than 48? Okay.
Yes. And sometimes I think that's why you'll see we update the packet if we have a change. We can update it after that 48 hours, but we just can't make any changes to the agenda. The other instance where member deliberations are important, where you may have a majority of the quorum and inadvertently have a potential OMA violation is via email. So a meeting can still occur via email. A lot of times, because there is a city council email account, you all will be emailed information, whether it be the agenda or something else. We ask that you do not reply all to this email because if you reply all and start discussing public business, that can be deemed a violation of the Open Meetings Act. Please just reply to less than a majority of the quorum or to city staff, and we will get back to you. Moving on to the Freedom of Information Act, the city of Evanston is subject to the Freedom of Information Act or FOIA. All public documents prepared by or used by the public body are subject to disclosure under FOIA. This pertains to all of you because any materials submitted to the public body are included in being subject to FOIA. I will say, there are specific exemptions that the city may take under FOIA to withhold documents, one of those being attorney-client privileged documents, anything that may be copyrighted and we don't have permission to share. So if you want a list of those exemptions, I encourage you to look at FOIA or talk to Clerk Mendoza or myself. But I bring this up today to note to all of you that emails, even on your personal email, may be subject to FOIA. Text messages, even on your personal device, may be subject to FOIA. Now, I say "may" because there's a lot of situations where they may not be. So what we'll do, if we receive a FOIA request asking for communications from your personal device or text messages, you'll get an email either from my department or the clerk's department letting you know of the FOIA request, letting you know of the parameters, and then asking you to conduct a search for potentially documents that are responsive to the FOIA. And then we'll go ahead and review those to see if they are subject to FOIA. So city business is anything that is an.
Hold on a second. I know this is, this is informal, but I just want to make sure everyone uses their microphones when they speak, because I think this is being recorded too, right? Yeah.
So the question was, what is city business under FOIA? City business is usually defined as business that's before the city or pertains to the city. So even if it's a resident reaching out about, say, rats in the alley, that is, you know, it's about city business. If it's an item on an agenda or an upcoming agenda, that would automatically be city business. But again, it's something that we look at on a case-by-case basis. I will specify that if you have emails or text messages with a majority of the council, even if it's on personal devices, those are automatically subject to FOIA if they're about city business. A majority of the quorum, text messages.
Aren't they illegal in the first place?
Yes, they are. They're a violation of OMA, but they'd also be subject to FOIA. And then text messages and emails sent during a public meeting are also subject to FOIA automatically.
Councilmember Kelly.
I had a question regarding the attorney-client privilege. So just by virtue of being attorney-client, doesn't mean that you, it doesn't have to be released, it's the content, correct, of the attorney-client?
Absolutely. So if there's legal advice being sought or received or if the email contains attorney-work product, then it is exempt. But if it's just an email about scheduling or something, not seeking legal advice, it's not automatically exempt.
Councilmember Ms. Ma.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. So text messages sent amongst ourselves during a council meeting are FOIA-able?
Absolutely.
Does that mean if they are sent amongst ourselves or one-on-one outside of a council meeting, they're not FOIA-able?
Potentially not FOIA-able. If they are subject to city business, they are still likely subject to FOIA. If they're about, you know, family or personal, then they're not. Any other questions on FOIA? I know that was a brief overview. FOIA is a pretty extensive act. I know you all did the Attorney General's training on FOIA and OMA. So if you have any questions that come up with FOIA or OMA while you're in the next four years, please feel free to reach out to my office or the clerk's office. It's something that our offices deal with on a daily basis. FOIAs have to be responded to within five business days. In 2024, we had over 4,000 FOIA requests. I note that to say that when I started nine years ago, I think we had about 300 or 400 FOIA requests a year. So it is, it is a significant amount of time taken up by everyone. And at this point, I think we are all, you know, very familiar with the act.
Councilwoman Ms. Ma.
Yeah, one question about FOIA of emails that won't require us to do anything individually. Somebody in the IT department has access to emails and will read through and pluck any emails that are deemed relevant.
That's correct. If it's on the city email, which we require and request all public business to be conducted on your city email for that purpose, the IT department can do a search of emails with search terms and dates pertaining to the request and pull all those responsive documents. Those emails are then reviewed for attorney-client privilege or other exemptions by the law department and the clerk's office, and then disclosed.
Yeah. So I, and I think some others on the council have in the email signature some language to the effect that the contents of this email may be FOIA-able.
Absolutely. Yeah, and you can include that in your, in your signature line. You don't have to. But it is a good idea because people should note that anytime they're emailing with their elected officials, those emails are subject to FOIA. I will say, we always try our best, and I think we do a very good job, at redacting personal information. So if someone provides their personal, their personal home address, their personal phone number, or some details that are maybe very personal and invasive, we do try to make those exemptions.
Councilmember Harris.
So, excuse me. So thank you for presenting this information. We will receive notification every time we've been FOIAed? Or that, I'd like to know that.
I, again, like, we do over 4,000 FOIAs a year. So it is virtually, like, you have to understand that we only have two full-time staff in the clerk's office who are actively helping with this. And then, like, we're limited with the staff members in the law department that can review and redact. So it's really difficult for us to send you a notification every single time your email is FOIAed. I can guarantee you that at least someone, someone's email is being FOIAed at least once a week. So I would just, you have to operate under the assumption that your email is always being FOIAed. I'm happy to send over like a guide to you. I was working with the law department to create a guide about like how to, you know, how to use your email with FOIA in mind. So I will, the guide is created. Put it through legal review to make sure it's correct, and then I will share that around. But we'd love to be able to notify you, but it is, it is a really, it's a hard ask.
Okay. So then, when does somebody know that they're being scrutinized? I mean, I would believe always, but if you find something that's inappropriate, then you circle back and say something?
That's always been my practice. When I handled FOIA and I asked that of my staff, if they see something that stands out, I do ask that we reach out and just let you know that it's going to be released.
And it's not the case that we, I mean, it's really rare that something is inappropriate in emails. I, like, personally have never seen anything inappropriate from this body, but if I ever do, I'll let you know.
I think sometimes if we've come across a situation where a resident emails a council member with something that's very personal, we try to give that council member notification so they can just let the resident know that it's been requested, but the city redacted it, just, just to keep everyone apprised. Any other questions on FOIA? Okay. I'm going to move on to Robert's Rules of Order. Now, I bring up Robert's Rules of Order because it comes, Robert's Rules of Order comes into play several times. Obviously, the city council has adopted its own rules. I encourage you all to review those rules. I believe they're included in the binder that you were all just handed out. They're also available online. We will all be back here again on Monday night to talk extensively about them. So I'm not going to go over them here this morning because we have a whole rules committee whereon which we discuss them. But I do think it would be important for everyone to review them so you know the specific council rules. It's also something, it's a living, breathing document that we'll work through every other Monday together. So I will specify that the city council rules only apply to city council meetings. They do not apply to standing meetings of the city council, so administration and public works, planning and development, rules committee, human services, Robert's Rules of Order do control for those. And then anything not included in the city council rules reverts back to Robert's Rules of Order. So if there's anything that's not covered, we do revert back to Robert's rules and follow them. It's important that the city council follow both the council rules and Robert's Rules of Order when conducting public meetings. It creates a clean record and it allows us to keep minutes of the meeting. And then we just always ask, and this body is very good at this, some of our boards and commissions are less exceptional at it, but we, we just ask that every motion's proper and receives a second so that we can keep that record. I created a quick chart here about some typical motions that we're all going to come across often. I think a lot of people are familiar with this. So I'm not going to go through it individually, but two that I think I would like to highlight, as they did come up often in the 81st city council, is a motion to object to procedure is called a point of order. And so that's what you would say, you would say point of order if you're going to object to procedure. It does not require a second, it's not debatable, and then it's up to the chair where we go with the point of order. The same thing for if you're looking to request information, the motion you would state then is point of information. Again, it's not debatable, it does not need a second, and then it's up to the chair if it's discussed. Does anyone have any questions about Robert's Rules of Order or how to make a motion or a second?
So past practice has been, when somebody says point of order, that they just start talking? The proper way for that to unfold is what?
The proper way would be for the chair to recognize the point of order and for the chair to allow it.
So if you raise a point of order, you should wait for that to happen, correct?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Again, if you have any questions on FOIA, OMA, or Robert's Rules of Order, please reach out to my office. The link for the PAC training is up there. I know several of you probably did this previously. You're only required to do it once, but my suggestion, would you do it at least every four years, just as a refresher? It's free, it doesn't take much time, and it's, it's always good. I put my contact information up there. My contact information is pretty public, so if you ever need me, you should be able to get ahold of me. You can always reach out to Luke as well. All right, I'm going to move on to the Evanston Code of Ethics. This is a big one. I highly suggest that in all of your free time, you take a gander at the city code, chapter 1, title 10. It is the city of Evanston's Code of Ethics. I would read it and review it often as it all, as it pertains to all of you. So why is ethics important to local government? Well, it's commonly defined as the rules of conduct that govern how society differentiates between good and bad and right and wrong. Many local governments, including Evanston, have created laws that outline a code of ethics that specify the conduct of all government actions, be it employees, elected officials, or appointed officials, to ensure that all dealings are conducted fairly and in an unbiased manner. So the Evanston Code of Ethics, like I mentioned, is applicable to elected officials, appointed board members, commission members, and all city employees. It sets forth standards addressing impartiality, use of public property and resources, conflict of interests, giving and receiving of gifts, and prohibited political activities. The use of city resources. Elected officials, of course, are given access to city resources, including city email. So the request is that you use it in mind that it is city property. City property cannot be used for personal use. That includes equipment, material, or vehicles. City resources can also be defined as utilizing staff for their specific skills. For example, a building plan review, tree trimming, special pickups, or election efforts. So no covered person can ask another city employee for personal use of those specialized skills. Conflicts of interest. So the Code of Ethics defines a conflict of interest to be either financial or personal. Elected officials cannot take or influence city action if they have a financial or personal interest in any transaction or matter with the city without full disclosure first. A financial interest, this is kind of, you know, easier to understand. If you have ownership, a contractual relationship, or a business relationship which will result in a monetary or other material benefit other than your official salary as an elected official, that is not, that is prohibited. A personal interest is also prohibited, and that is defined by the city's ethics code as any interest that would affect the action of the individual other than a financial interest. So that's a little bit vague. Maybe a lot of it vague. But I would just say that if you have any question on whether or not you have a conflict of interest, I would encourage you all to reach out to my office or to the city's Special Ethics Council, and we can provide you with guidance going forward.
Can you give an example of an instance when a member of council had a personal interest that was non-financial? Because, I mean, you have to understand, from our standpoint, like, one could say that we have a personal interest in effectuating the policy outcomes that we believe in.
Of course.
Right? Which is also our job. So it feels, it does feel like a very broad and vague thing.
Yeah, I would say, like, a personal interest would be, I think something that would stand out to me is if there was a zoning matter for your next-door neighbor that you were either opposed to or pro. That might be a personal interest that's not a financial gain, and the suggestion would likely to be to recuse yourself from that matter because it personally impacted you. Yeah, a family member getting a contract. I think that would also potentially have a financial gain for a family member. But yeah, I think that's personally and financial at that point. So elected officials are tasked with taking all necessary actions to avoid actual conflicts that would interfere with your ability to perform your duties independently and impartially. So some prohibited conflicts that are outlined in the Code of Ethics are disclosure of confidential information concerning affairs of the city, representing private interests before the city bodies or courts, acquisition of interests. Officials cannot purchase, receive, or accept any financial interest in any sale to the city of any service or property. And then incompatible employment. Officials cannot render services or accept employment for private interests when the employment or services creates a conflict of interest. Financial disclosure statement. So a lot of you sitting up here have filled these out every year, but I did want to highlight them for the new members. Each year, you'll be requested by the city of Evanston and by Cook County to fill out a financial disclosure statement. This assists the city to ensure greater level of accountability and transparency. It is required by code. And county and state officials are also required to submit something similar to the county and the state. Cook County also requests that we all submit one to Cook County as well. So if you have any questions when those come out from the clerk's office, I think they should be sent out here shortly. You can reach out to my office or the clerk's office, and we can assist you in filling them out. And just so you know, elected officials get them, but so do city staff and other appointed board members. So department heads, the city manager, deputy city manager, and any staff that serve as liaisons to any of the boards. I wanted to go over recusal and abstention because I think it's something that comes up often. And so I don't want to read this. This is exactly what the city code provides on recusal and abstention. But essentially, what this says is if you have a conflict of interest that you want to recuse or abstain from voting on, you need to submit that conflict of interest in writing to the board in which you are going to recuse yourself from or disclose it verbally in public at the meeting. So if you're going to say, like, I abstain for X reason, you do that in public or you can submit it in advance in writing.
And just to be real here, that often is not how it goes in practice.
Correct.
So that's a good reminder for all of us to follow the rules.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Haddad.
So follow-up question on that. I, of course, have the most public conflict of interest with being an employee at Northwestern. Would I have to submit that in writing before every meeting? Or should, I mean, I've been, at this point, very public about that. So what's, what's the guidance from, from your office?
Yeah, I would just say, I think if you submit it in writing to the chair of the council, or in this case, the mayor, I think just that you are going to recuse yourself from any vote pertaining to Northwestern. We can have that on file.
Okay. Do that now.
I also wanted to highlight prohibited interests in contracts. Now, this is state law that I highlighted here. Again, I'm not going to read it, but I am going to read a portion of it. And this is really important because, because it's state law and it's illegal, it actually comes with criminal potential violations. So that's why I want to highlight it all for you here today. I know we've seen a lot of this in the news in Illinois. And so I just thought it would be good to highlight it here. So no person holding any office may be in any manner financially interested directly in his own name or indirectly in the name of any person, association, trust, or corporation in any contract or the performance of any work in the making or letting of such officer may be called upon to act or vote. So any item that you're going to be acting on or voting on, you can have no interest in financially. And so that's state law. It's reflected in our city code as well, but I just wanted to highlight it for everyone here today.
Does that mean we can't raise property taxes?
No. That is a specific exemption because you are allowed to do that under state law. Can officials accept gifts? The long and short of it is no. There are some exceptions. The city code allows for the acceptance of gifts up to $100 in like food or beverages at an event. But the legal advice you're going to get is always err on the side of caution and don't accept gifts. This includes elected officials, spouses, or immediate family members living within the elected official's household. They can't solicit or accept any gift from a prohibited source. And then no prohibited source can intentionally offer or make a gift that violates this section. Now, what is a prohibited source? It's an entity that does business with the city of Evanston, or has any items before the city of Evanston for approval.
And I just want to flag for everyone that, I mean, and I think those of you who've been on the council remember, an example of something that I think doesn't feel like a gift necessarily in the moment, but is and should be thought of as such, is a comp ticket to an event that has a ticket price.
Correct. So again, if it's under that $100 threshold, you know, it's acceptable under the city code, but if it's over that, my legal advice is always to just pay for it personally.
Councilmember Isles.
So if I accept a ticket to a charity event, but I give the charity the amount of money that the ticket cost at that event, am I in violation?
Yeah, potentially still in violation. It would depend on what the value of the ticket was. But I think there is a provision in here for reimbursement of the gift.
I'm just asking because I have an event tonight, and I want to make sure that I'm not in violation of the...
I think if you accepted it prior to taking office, that might be an exception.
Okay.
So for the whole thing about lunch or whatever, if I am invited to meet with someone and they have a spread out, that's fine, right?
Yes.
And then, but if they invite me specifically to a restaurant and they offered a pay, the limit is $100?
That's correct.
What if it's multiple times? Like, does it accumulate?
No, it's per event.
Okay.
I will say that there's exceptions to this gift ban. Obviously, you can accept gifts from family members and inheritance, other things that are personal in nature. Official misconduct. The city code has an extensive outline of what is official misconduct. Again, I'm not gonna read this slide for you all, but I do want to highlight it. It is pretty extensive. It goes over a lot of acts that are official misconduct, and I highly suggest that everyone reviews this as we go forward. It goes over a lot of items that I already discussed. One I will highlight would be that G is official misconduct disregards their fiduciary responsibilities to the corporation, including but not limited to disclosure of confidential information to the public without prior unanimous approval of the corporate authorities. So disclosure of confidential information without unanimous support from the corporate authorities is official misconduct under the city code. Any questions on the city's Code of Ethics?
What are the penalties if the Code of Ethics is not respected?
Yeah, so the penalties under the city's Code of Ethics, after it goes through an official ethics violation and hearing and notice, is that the city council can be held accountable and financially penalized. And so I think it's up to, I think, $1,000 per occurrence. Some of these, like I said, the state code comes with criminal charges, potentially from the state's attorney or the attorney general.
And who can initiate an ethics complaint?
So anyone can file an ethics complaint with the city's Special Ethics Council, but the city prosecutes the ethics complaint. So the process is that an allegation comes in, the city of Evanston's outside Special Ethics Council looks into that allegation. If they find that it is a viable allegation and that we have overview of that, if it's a covered person, so there can't be like an ethics violation of a resident. They're not covered under this ethics code. Then they will bring official charges. It'll go to an administrative hearing in this room with an administrative law judge. The city will present the evidence, the respondent will be able to present for themselves, and then a finding will be issued and a suggestion will be made from the ALJ.
So anyone can initiate? Anyone means any community member, any elected official, any staff member?
Correct.
Okay.
And some staff members are required to. So for example, like a member of the law department would likely be required to. I'm gonna do a brief overview of the city's procurement code. I previously gave a similar presentation at council a couple months ago, so I don't want to go too in-depth on this. But I do recognize there's a few new faces. So if you have any questions on the city's procurement code as the next four years unfolds, I ask that you reach out to myself or Hitesh Desai, who's our CFO. So the city's procurement code is also covered in the city code. It's found on the website. It's entitled 1, Chapter 17. It's entitled "City Contracts." So it covers applicable provisions from the ethics code, the city's purchasing manual, and other Illinois state statutes. There's four basic categories of the city's purchasing. Purchases under $25,000. Now, I bring up purchases under $25,000 because those purchases are within the city manager's purview for approval, so they can be approved by the city manager. Now, I specify that because purchases under $25,000 will still come before all of you, and then, of course, all bills paid by the city of Evanston come before all of you, always, in the bills list.
Councilmember Nissam.
Where's that $25,000 defined? Is that code?
It's in the city code. Yeah, it's in the city code and it's in state law.
And it's, state law also says $25,000.
It, I think it just says, the municipal code says that any purchase over $25,000 has to be approved by the city council.
And it's probably said that for decades.
Many decades, yes.
You know, during which inflation has increased prices. I'm wondering if at some point it might be appropriate to increase that limit, is where I'm going.
Yeah.
Separate discussion.
I think we have to talk to the state legislature. We are home rules, so we can, yes.
Thanks.
And so invitations to bid is another way in which the city initiates purchases for over $25,000. And then the ones you're gonna hear about most are RFPs, or Request for Proposals, and then RFQs, which are Requests for Purchases. So RFPs and RFQs follow a really specific procedure within the city of Evanston. We put out bid materials to request the bids or proposals to the public. We have specifications in there of what we're looking for, what the company needs to provide, and what's required under the city's code. And then all of those bids are submitted to the city by a certain date and time, and then in which the city opens all the bids at the same time, reviews them, has a committee that reviews and votes on them, ranks them, and then we bring them to the city council for approval with our recommendations. During that bid time, there is something called a cone of silence. So during the cone of silence in the bid time, between when the RFP goes out to the public and when the contract is awarded, there's a cone of silence wherein which the vendor or the contractor cannot communicate with the city on any matter, and that includes elected officials. Communication with elected officials or staff outside of the procurement process during this time can eliminate the contractor or vendor's ability to be awarded the contract. It also would be a violation of the Code of Ethics for an elected official or city staff to be having those conversations. Council involvement in procurement. How does this impact all of you? So like I said, elected officials are specifically prohibited in speaking with vendors prior to awarding the contractor or the contract. And then this ensures that the appearance of impropriety is avoided. And then the city deals with many state and federal contracts, and state and federal law is really explicit when it comes to the process for awarding this. So when we're dealing with state and federal funding and their procurement process, we're likely under much stricter rules when it comes to those RFPs and RFQs. And then violation of that can result in rescinding of the grant from the state or federal government. Once a contract has been awarded, the city does name a point of contact from city staff that the contractor works with. And then we request, and it is in the vendor's contract, that the vendor only speak with that point of contact. We do that for a couple reasons, mainly coming out of my department. So if you have one point of contact, it ensures that if there's any change order or change to the contract, the vendor explicitly knows that that change order must come before you all to be voted on. We never want an employee or an elected official to have the appearance of agency on behalf of you all, and for the vendor to then allege that they were able to gain authority to have a change order without a vote from this council. Any questions on the procurement process before I move on? Okay. My last...
Councilmember Haddadis.
Sorry.
Just one. I'm glad you're touching upon this because I know I'll sometimes get solicitations from vendors, and I just say, "Just talk to procurement." Because for the new people up here, you'll probably start getting, you just get random solicitations for different, you know, services. I just, so, yeah.
That would be our recommendation. If you receive any solicitations, please just refer them to city staff. I appreciate that. My last topic this morning, other than my department overview, is just a quick review of the council manager form of government. What is council manager form of government? Well, it combines the strong political leadership of elected officials with the strong managerial experience of an appointed manager. The power and authority to set policy rests with the elected governing body, which includes a mayor and members of the council. And then, of course, the governing body hires a nonpartisan manager to oversee the day-to-day. The city council's role in council manager form of government is the legislative and policymaking body. The council sets long-term goals of the municipality, sets and approves the budget, gives direction on land use development, capital improvement, financing, and strategic planning, amongst other things. The city manager's role is to handle the day-to-day. He prepares the budget for the council's consideration, recruits, hires, terminates, and supervises the government staff, serves as the council's chief advisor, and carries out the council's policies. Just a couple highlights of council manager form of government. Council manager form of government has been found to save local governments money as compared to strong mayor forms of government. In 2019, more than 3,453% of local governments with a population over 10,000 in the United States operated with a council manager form of government. And then over 370 counties utilize a council manager form of government. So it is widely used throughout the United States. And that's it for me. Any questions on council manager form of government? Alright, thank you all. Oh, okay, just stretching.
Good morning. I'm Allison Leifsteger, the Policy and Intergovernmental Affairs Manager. And we're gonna slow it right down. Okay, so we're gonna talk about legislative process. I put some GIFs in here because I didn't know how long Alex was gonna go, and I thought maybe you'd need some goofy things to look at. Okay. So as Alex was talking about our form of government, you know, the distinction is that you guys get to come up with the legislative ideas. So here's how that happens. First, you have an idea. And that's exciting. It's a legislative idea, so that wouldn't be administrative stuff. Administrative stuff would be like process, like internal staff processes, sometimes even programs, I think, would fall under. If it's like a small program, I think that'd fall under administrative. In the past, we have had anything that's an ordinance be considered a legislative idea. We're gonna move away from that a little bit because we have, for example, stop signs, like locations of stop signs in our code that we're gonna consider administrative and not legislative. So you'll have a legislative idea, and then you'll make a referral. I am going to send you the link. It is the same link for the referrals form, so it's an online form. Only you all should have access to it, no one else. And it's the same form as last year, so if you're a returning member and you have that form, and I send you this email, you can ignore it. But if you're new, please take that link, bookmark it, or you can always email and ask me for it, but this will be the way that you submit your legislative idea. You're gonna get two, at least two of your, go ahead.
So just given the recent little thing, is that a single link for all 10 of us?
It's a single link for all 10 of you.
And if it is published, it then is usable by the world, or is there...
Correct. If it gets sent out to the world, it's gets sent out to the world, and we'll have to come up with a new one.
And there's not a better way to handle this? I guess I'm asking Luke that question.
One of the things we decided, and you know, feel free to jump in, is that we added all of you to the distribution list. So you can see if, when somebody submits a referral, it used to be that like only we would get the emails. Now you'll all get them, so you can see if your name is on it and if it's, if it's looking good. So please look at those to make sure your name is used the way you want your name to be used. If we come up with other security issues, we will change our process. But one of the reasons we kept it the way it is is because, and we'll get to it a little bit, is that sometimes council members will say, "Yeah, that's a good idea. I'm not, like, I want to be the referrer. I don't totally know what the process," or like, "I don't understand the technicalities of that piece of legislation. So staff, can you please fill this out for me?" And we'll ask the referrer to ask that in writing and include the two co-refers in the email, just as a way to get some staff support in there if it's necessary. But we didn't want to cut off that option.
Okay. Makes me nervous.
Me too. Go ahead. I just wanted to... Oh, sorry.
If you could just use your switch as well in the future, but Councilmember Davis.
We don't have that for the commission I was on, a little switch. I just wanted to add that I actually think that we could use a Google form that would send the notifications to everyone, and we'd be able to restrict it just to a certain set of people, particularly within the organization at cityofevanston.org.
That only people at cityofevanston.org can fill it out?
Fill it out and see it.
Yeah. Yeah, we can move to Google form. We have Form Stack, which has been helpful, honestly, in certain ways. But we can, we can...
Just an option.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, so you'll get two of your council members to agree with you and to be co-refers. You'll fill out the online form, and then, yeah, only the primary referrer should be filling it out, and you can email staff, CC-ing the co-refers, asking staff to do it. So then it goes to the referrals committee. Referrals will meet usually about 15 minutes before APW. In the past, it was in a separate room. Not a lot of people came. It's gonna be up here in the future. So if you're early for APW, don't be surprised if there's another committee going on. The referrals committee will recommend that it be referred either to a BCC or a standing committee. That committee, the chair, is supposed to respond within a week per one of our city council rules. Now, that council rule may change when you guys talk about council rules in the coming weeks and months. But right now, we have a rule that says the committee chair will respond within a week and say, "Yes, like, I've received this based on our current agenda and the stuff we have in the hopper. This is when we think we'll put it on the agenda." It'll go to that committee. It'll go to that committee. If it goes to a standing committee, it'll go directly to committee, the standing committee. If it goes to a BCC, it'll go to the BCC and then the standing committee. And then it'll go to council. If it's an ordinance, it'll be heard twice. If it's a resolution, it'll be heard once.
Councilmember Newsma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this, for the benefit of the newcomers, this is a fairly new procedure, at least within the last four years. Didn't exist previous to the last council. Would be, might be helpful, be helpful for me, maybe, to hear a little bit of, a bit of the background and context and how did it happen before we had these rules?
I have no idea.
I can jump in here. So when, when the two of us took office four years ago, the, what the rules said about referrals was basically that a council member could make a referral during call of the wards. And I think candidly, and I'm not, I'm not like the institutional memory guy around here, but I think candidly that prior to when we took office four years ago, that wasn't utilized all that often. And then because in 2021, a number of, I think, energetic and creative policymakers were elected to city council, it became, it started to become the case that there was a bunch of referrals being kind of made during call of the wards. And that had a bunch of really bad downsides. First of all, and most importantly, there was no transparent process of tracking them. So like, the city manager would write them down on a spreadsheet on her computer and then they would sort of eventually appear, or maybe not appear, on an agenda of a BCC, which I think led to a lot of confusion and in some cases frustration. Another challenge was that they were just made verbally. There was no written record. Often, something done verbally is like a couple of sentences rather than having more detail. And so it was sort of hard to know what necessarily was meant. And so the purpose of all this, which is, you know, it's elaborate, it's procedural, but it's to have a mechanism whereby legislative ideas that come from the folks up here are public, so it's transparent, they're made in writing to minimize confusion. And then the process by which they eventually are potentially enacted, or at least come up for a vote, is transparent and as orderly as possible, just to minimize, like, what happened to that thing again? Or I made that referral, then I never, and then I never heard from it again, et cetera. Does that answer your question?
Councilmember Saffredin.
I was just gonna add, and one of the considerations has been the amount of staff time that's required for pretty simple, let's see, or what are perceived to be pretty simple requests. And that's why the city manager's been included, because that was another issue, was the workflow of staff was being interrupted by requests that were made. And so that's, that's one of the considerations when you, when the referrals committee considers timeline. I think that's been effective in terms of allowing the city manager to manage the burden on staff for some of the requests that can be data-intensive or require research.
Councilmember Kelly, followed by Hatakakis.
Thank you. I think one area, though it might seem like it's clear, ends up not being very clear, is we used to say it was any policy change and now we're saying legislative idea. I think that needs to be better defined. I think many things that come before us frequently are like, wait a second, this really is a policy change, even if it's an increase in the amount of tax dollars we apply towards something that can be considered policy. So I'd ask that, that be clearly defined, what a legislative idea is. And I assume this is across the board for council members and staff, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So if we could get a definition of legislative idea.
Yeah, and if you wanna incorporate that discussion in your rules discussion, that would be great, too.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hatakakis.
My one ask going forward, if we could figure out some way to have a legislative dashboard. I think as we're like going through and talking about these legislative changes in committees, you know, this is sometimes what happened, happens a lot. We'll be talking about something for like three months, six months, and then when it gets to council, people are like, where did this come from? And I think it would be really fantastic to have a list and a really easy, like,
easier.
Easy-to-find page where people just see like what's in the hopper. Because I would often tell people, if you want to get your input, it's better to come to the BCCs. And that's the time when we're really like talking about the incremental changes we're trying to make. So I'd really like that to happen. So thanks.
I'd like that to happen, too.
Clerk Mendoza.
Yeah, I know. So one of the things that I've been asking, because it is really difficult as well from the like signature perspective of like signing ordinances and sending them out and the organization part, like this is all like a workflow process that we are all doing together. So in order to do that, there are programs that allow us to track legislation, but that would, that would mean a significant, making a significant investment in our technology. It would mean changing our agenda management system and our, technically like our, in order to add a legislative like management system. And it would mean adding also a new like minutes management system. There are systems that do all of those things, like for example, the county uses Legistar. And it's a great system, but it, just keep in mind, like right now, the, the current contract that we have is about $13,000 a year for our agenda management system. If we want to change that system and then also add the legislative tracker, it would be a significant investment from the council. So if that's a direction that the council wants to go in, into the future, I would very much like love that investment on our part, but that's like direction that you would have to give us, is to go and seek out a new program because that program will not be $13,000. It would probably be two or three, maybe four times more expensive than that.
Councilmember Hatakakis.
Yeah, just a follow-up, I guess, comment and question. So for folks listening in, so FormStack is the, the software?
No.
Because we have the Civic Web, which does some things. And could you all just explain how?
I can describe that really quickly. So we use FormStack to manage the referral process, but we use iCompass to manage the agenda building process. So that's what like staff would use to build their agendas, to build their memos. And then on the backend, staff will then build an agenda in a packet. So there are systems that do all of those things, right? Where you could do your referral, you could do your agenda building, you can do minutes, you can do your legislative tracking. They all speak to each other, but it's, it's just an investment. So, so it's taking all of the different, there are systems that would do all of the different things we do with different tools right now. So right now, we use like three tools, right? We use like Google Sheets, FormStack, iCompass. Am I missing anything? To, to track that legislative process. If we invest in a system, it would do all of those things for us. And there could be a public-facing version of that, where the user on the other end will be able to understand where that piece of legislation is in that moment.
Thank you. Councilmember Rogers.
I would just like to follow up on something Councilmember Kelly said, and I think we really need to define what is legislative, what is administrative. This often became a problem for Land Use Commission where things would move forward, an issue would come up, we would ask staff to address it, staff would draft legislation, we would pass it, it would come to city council, and then it would get kicked to the referrals committee. And so I think it really kind of needs to be clarified as to exactly what sorts of things bodies have the ability to do that are outside of the council and its standing committees. And what they can do administratively and whether that has to come through this whole process.
Yeah, I think it's a great conversation for the rules. This is just a little image of, I don't know why we go counterclockwise, but we do. So you have, or why we start in the middle on the right. But you have an idea, you find two co-refers and fill out the form, you go to the referrals committee, goes to a BCC, a standing committee, and then it'll go to council.
Also, why it's a circle at all?
It's a great question. Yeah, because everything is always changing, you might wanna amend it, whatever. Okay. For our committee structure, we have BCCs, boards, committees, and commissions. You're all very familiar with that. And standing committees. The difference, obviously, is that BCCs are not solely made up of council members where standing committees are. BCCs actually have three different, well, two different types of makeup. One is with only residents and the other is residents and council members. So I just gave some examples, but social services, the environment board, economic development, finance, and budget, those all have a combination of residents and some council members. Animal welfare board, yeah, animal welfare board and the citizen police review commission are made up of only residents. There's also a lot of variation within those, like how people get appointed, how the council members get appointed. There's been some desire to clean some of that up. And so if you are interested in that, that would be amazing and we can chat. We also have sort of an obscene number of BCCs. We have over 40. They're, they all do incredible work, but it's a lot of BCCs. And, and a lot of your time is spent on BCCs as well, for those that you can serve on. And then some of the BCCs report to standing committees, others report directly to council. So economic development, finance, and budget, for example, those report directly to council. If something passes out of either of those two, it'll show up on the council consent agenda, whereas environment board, for example, if something passes out of environment board, it goes to human services and then to council. The variety is a little bit confusing and frustrating. Once you get the hang of it, it's not too bad. But also, again, I think a lot of us would be interested in doing some cleanup if anybody's down for that. This is a little bit hard to read, but we're just gonna do a quick referral example. So Councilmember Burns wants to amend our Fair Work Week ordinance because it needs some cleanup. And so he calls Councilmember Saffredin and Councilmember Hatakakis to ask if they are willing to be co-refers and they both say yes. Thank you both so much for your service. Councilmember Burns is gonna go to the link and fill out the form and everyone on council's gonna get a heads up. So you're all gonna read that and be like, ah, there's a referral about fair work week cleanup. You're gonna say, actually, I didn't really wanna put my name on that. And you're gonna call him and call me and we're gonna figure it out. And you're gonna say, oh, I love that idea. And you're gonna call him and you're gonna call me and we're gonna put your name on as a co-refer, whatever you wanna do. The referrals committee will meet and say, okay, based on what's on the human services agenda for the next three months, we think that the, you know, they could fit it in and staff will be ready for it before August. So I'll send an email to human services committee, they'll respond and say, we will do that before August, you got it, we'll put it on in July. The human services committee hears it in July, they vote yes. The cleanup ordinance comes to council in August and September, once for introduction, once for action. We've got a few different types of legislative action. Resolutions are only heard once, they're just for action. Ordinances come to council twice, once for introduction, once for action. There can also be items for discussion where no, no action is taken, no action can be taken. So you might discuss it and say, hey, this is really great, we're all ready to move on this. Because we didn't tell the public it was gonna be for action, it can't be for action that night, even if everybody agrees. And then there's also except in place on file. That is if you, there's a report or something and you just are sort of acknowledging, yes, we've seen this, it's, it's on record. What else should you do? You should talk to committee members and your fellow colleagues to make sure that we don't have those situations where somebody says, wait, like, where did this, this is coming out of nowhere? You know, talk to each other, talk to BCC committee members, you should lobby for your stuff, go for it. And show up to those committee hearings, be there to answer questions and dispel any myths or whatever you wanna do. You might still get Chris Trager telling you, no. Any questions before we move on to 311?
Councilmember Kelly.
Thank you. So this has changed already, right? So I think I just like resubmitted the responsible bidders ordinance and I noticed I got an email. So did that go out to everybody?
Yes, that went out to all council members.
And what is that?
Yeah, so it used to be the case, until very recently, that when a referral happened, some collection of people, including Luke, Allison, probably Alex, and me, got a notification of it. And now that's been changed, so everybody gets that notification.
Okay. So any referral that gets submitted, everybody gets notification, but that doesn't change the referral process, correct?
Correct.
I mean, you're not waiting for feedback in order to determine where it goes.
Nope. That's, that's mainly because we had an incident where you were surprised somebody submitted a referral under your name. And so one of the security measures we're putting in place is now everybody sees every referral. And that does a few different things. It's great for transparency, it's great if you wanna add your name to something, it's great that you know kind of what's out there in the universe, so you're not surprised in three months when something comes up. And it's important you should look to see if your name was used correctly or not. If something comes in with your name on it, let me know immediately.
Well, I did, but, right. So thank you. Okay, so, but that doesn't, like I say, you're not, because I don't wanna.
Doesn't change anything else.
Sort of deliberation happening before it comes to the public. And I just wanna be clear, like, this isn't a, for the referrals committee, this has no additional impact in terms of.
Nothing.
Saying, oh, I like this and in terms of prioritizing.
Nothing.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Not yet. So we're just gonna role-play a little bit. It's gonna be great. It's gonna be amazing. What's that? So we just thought it would be productive to just go through some of the basics of the making of motions and the conducting of debate for a council meeting. So I wanna, I want us to imagine a circumstance where we're in a city council meeting, the Committee on Administration of Public Works has voted out an ordinance to make orange the official color of the city of Evanston. And then, why is that funny? It's a good color. It's like a top-five color for sure, I think. I don't know, top eight, maybe? Doesn't matter. So would someone wanna make a motion on that ordinance?
I move for the, I move for the acceptance of the color orange being city color.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
So Councilmember Harris moves introduction of ordinance 100-0-25. Councilmember Hatakakis seconds. So it's an ordinance, right? So it's gonna require two votes. This is the introduction vote. We'll do a bunch of stuff. If it passes, then it would come back at our next council meeting for final action. And so then we would have debate and folks could switch on their lights if they were so inclined. So for example, Councilmember Newsma just switched on his light. I'll call on him in a second. But what the, what the council rules say is that everyone gets five minutes to speak on every issue. So I've got a, what I'm doing up here is I'm maintaining two different pieces of track record. One is who signed up to speak in what order. So I call on people in the order that they spoke. And so like, I don't call on anyone for a second time until everybody wants to speak once, gets to speak. I don't call on anyone for a third time until everyone wants to speak once or twice, gets to speak once or twice, et cetera. And the other thing I'm tracking is just how much time do you have left? So if you speak for a minute and a half, I write down three and a half minutes, because you've got three and a half minutes left. I will tell you how I track the time. It's a little silly. The way I track the time is the time that you are speaking. So if you, for instance, ask Director Flax to come forward and speak to what the community development department thinks about the color orange, while you're asking her questions, your clock is ticking. And while she's answering your questions, your clock isn't ticking. That's not explicitly written in the rules, but it's sort of the precedent that I established. And I, I'm happy for us to discuss it next on Monday at the Rules Committee or any, for time in the future, because I think it is a little bit imperfect, but, but that's the system that I use. The rules also say that the. The rules also say that the council kind of directs me on how rigidly to enforce the five-minute rule. And I will say that council has typically been not particularly rigid. Just editorialize. I think usually the five minutes is enough. And I think often when we go over the five minutes, it's because we're kind of repeating ourselves and there may be two people up here who disagree, who really feel compelled to reiterate their opinions as the other one reiterates their opinion. But I would sort of humbly suggest that I think adherence to the five-minute rule probably will not lose us a lot of content and substance being shared. Before we move on, are there questions about like the timekeeping or the kind of calling on people process? Council member Sufferton.
So just real quick, some of that'll be up for discussion Monday night, too, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I don't know if it's literally an agenda item on Monday, but it's definitely a thing for the rules committee. I think it's, it's probably best if the rules are super clear because it's not great for it to be just a judgment call by me.
Agreed.
Council member Newsma.
Are we still role playing on this orange thing?
We're ready, yeah.
All right, well, I will object to the color orange as the city of Evanston's official color because the word orange doesn't rhyme with anything. And if you're writing a poem about lovely Evanston, blue and green, the best city you've ever seen, you can flow. If it's orange, you're not going to come up with anything. So I'm going to vote no on the orange.
But you're not trying to amend it, you're just?
As a point of information, if this does move forward, I would like to define orange on the Pantene scale, Pantone scale. Mr. Rogers can correct me. But I'm going to vote no in any case.
I appreciate your point for the educational purposes of this exercise, though I would love if someone were interested in amending the ordinance. Council member Rogers.
I'd like to make an amendment to the ordinance that the color orange is acceptable as long as it is not Pantone 1655, which I own.
Conflict, conflict of interest.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, council member Rogers moves to amend this ordinance in some complicated way I didn't understand. Council member Newsma seconds. It's a great illustration of why I am actually very rigid about something that is going to annoy all of you guys these next four years, but I feel very strongly about it. The rules give me the right to require you to put amendments in writing and I always exercise that right. Because this is an example of an amendment that to council member Rogers is probably pretty clear. Did not make sense to me. We had, before I got rigid about, about that, we actually had a couple incidents where the law department would call me the morning after a council meeting and be like, that thing they passed last night, what was it exactly? And so I just think it's, it's really genuinely important, even though it slows things down and kind of makes me seem a little like a stick in the mud to have amendments in writing. So council member Rogers made this amendment. Council member Newsma seconds will now stand at ease for a moment while council member Rogers reduces amendments to writing. And what I would ask everyone to do in that situation is copy the whole council as well as the city clerk and the corporation counsel on the amendment. Obviously, we're not going to do that now. But if we've got to take a five-minute pause to make sure we all understand exactly what we're voting on, that's what I'm going to ask you all to do. So now that the amendment has been made, we would perhaps discuss the amendment and then at the end of that conversation, it would be time to vote on the amendment. Not the underlying ordinance, but the amendment to remove the one Pantone version of orange that has been removed. And so in that situation, I would say, will the clerk please take the roll?
Yes, council member Hadekakis.
Aye.
Council, council member Kelly.
Aye.
Council member Harris.
Aye.
Council member Isles.
Aye.
Council member Newsma.
Aye.
Council member Davis. Council member Rogers.
Aye. With seven voting in favor and none voting against the motion carries, so the ordinance is now amended and we will continue the discussion on the ordinance. And perhaps there's somebody up here who suddenly remembered that they've got one of the foremost experts on chromatic aesthetics in their ward and really doesn't feel comfortable taking action on this before heading back to the ward and checking in with that person. What would you do in that situation?
I moved to, I moved.
Go ahead. Council member Hadekakis.
I moved to table until the July, whatever, meeting, city council.
Is there a second? So council member Hadekakis moves to table this item to the first July meeting. Council member Harris seconds. So if you want to, the simplest way to delay something is to make a motion to table to a specific date, which happens a lot. And so by doing that, it just, if this motion passes, this item will then just automatically appear on the agenda for the first July meeting. And so if you, if we're in the middle of discussion, you feel like you need some more time, you think you know how much time you need, you make the motion to table to that specific time, someone seconds, then we would take the vote on that motion. And should it pass, we would just be done. And then automatically with no further action, it would appear by rule on that city council agenda. Now, to editorialize a little bit, the point of doing that is then to check in on, is to, is to give yourself time to do a specific thing. And I think one thing that we've encountered these last four years that is understandable but unfortunate is in the moment, you're like, oh, I need X amount of time to do Y thing to educate myself better about the issue. I'm going to ask that we table it for X amount of time. And then we're here for another four hours. You go home, you forget about it, you continue to have forgotten about it. And then we get back here in July with additional work that was supposed to get done to get people comfortable voting, not having been done. And so my recommendation would be, it's often a really good idea to delay to make sure you get the information you need. But then like, if you're in the habit of doing that, make a note of that project that you need to do so that when we come back on the appointed date, the work has been done. Council member Hadekakis, could I ask you to withdraw that motion for pedagogical reasons?
Sure, I withdraw said motion.
Council member Hadekakis withdraws the motion. The motion to table is no longer before us. Is there any other motion that one might make to delay something because they need a little more time to think about it or to do some preparatory work? Council member Harris?
I make a motion to hold the color orange.
Second. Council member Harris moves to hold this item. Council member Hadekakis seconds. And so what this does, this is a motion and a second that doesn't require a vote. It just automatically delays the item. To the next meeting. It automatically delays, delays the item to the next meeting. What's puzzling about this cheat sheet in front of me is it describes the motion as debatable, which I don't know what that means given that it doesn't require a vote.
It's not debatable, but it can be overturned by
Right, okay. All right, so the motion was made and seconded, which means there's no more conversation. This item is just getting delayed until the next meeting. Council member Newsma.
We'll probably cover this on Monday in rules committee, but it seems as if this particular rule, the two-vote hold, has been removed from the next draft of rules.
I don't remember.
That's a conversation for Monday.
Yeah, for sure. Well, under the current rules, though, if the hold, the motion's been made and seconded, so the item gets held. And if you don't want to see that happen, you can make a motion to overturn the hold as, as Alex described. And the thing about the motion to overturn the hold is it requires a two-thirds majority. So right now, for example, there's seven people here and two-thirds of seven is a little, between four and five. So it would require five of the seven of you to vote to overturn the hold. Otherwise, the hold would stand. So the only other item that I wanted to talk about is rule suspension for introduction and action. So I said, if it's an ordinance that requires two votes, the only way that that can be suspended is by suspension of the rule. And I wanted to flag this one because this is the only rule whose suspension requires unanimous vote. So most rules can be suspended by a two-thirds vote. The idea of this is the, the transparency benefit of having two separate hearings on two separate days for an ordinance is so important that it can only be overturned with a, with a unanimous vote. So that's just a thing to bear in mind. And it's, I think it's a little confusing because it is actually the rule suspension that we do most often. And so I think some people forget that other rule suspensions only require a two-thirds vote, not a unanimous vote. But just keep that in mind. That's what I wanted to cover with this exercise. Any questions? Further comments?
So, oh, sorry, I think, and there's a distinction between whether it's a committee or the council, right? With regard to hold and tabling.
So hold, hold is not in the Roberts rules. It's just a city council rules creation. So it doesn't exist at all for anything besides city council. Yeah, so it's a, it's a city, it's like a, it's a special bespoke motion that the city council of Evanston rules create for the Evanston city council. So if you want to delay something in committee, you got to table it rather than hold it. Right, sorry, the clerk makes a great point. So the Robert rules is kind of the default. So the way to imagine this is like the Robert rules are the laws of nature and then we've kind of added these bespoke Evanston-specific rules on top of it in the form of our city council rules. But anything that our city council rules don't address specifically defaults to the Roberts rules. Which is annoying because that's another long, confusing document you have to read first before, in order to facilitate understanding of the city council rules. Any further questions on this or comments or suggestions? Well, seeing no further discussion, the mock meeting of the city council stands adjourned so that the real meeting can continue.
Good morning, city council, mayor Bess, city manager Stowe, clerk Mendoza and department heads. I'm Sue Ponorelli. I'm the police service desk and 311 manager. Thank you so much for having me this morning. I have a few slides somewhere. I just want to talk a little bit about 311. I was on the implementation team, so it is my baby. So very proud of 311. We implemented on 3/1/2011, a little marketing tool there. This is kind of an overview of our stats. However, texts and chats started a little later with the numbers, but they're rounded. You see, we're almost at 2 million phone calls, 450,000 service requests. So that's requests for service through our CRM system, which I'll talk about. Texts and chats. We have eight full-time staff members. We have a supervisor, Yvette Hopson, and myself, I'm the manager. And we are under the umbrella of the police department. We are one of the few 311 call centers that are in the police department nationwide. So we're under the support service division. We work very closely with all the departments, but we also work very closely with the police service desk, which is also under my umbrella. And that is the non-emergency portion of the police department, which also fields calls 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So we're excited about that. My slides are not very fancy. I, I was told not to do any jokes, so I'm going to be serious. Just a little bit about 311. I do have some handouts for you, which you'll have, I think, in your book or in the chamber that gives you a lot of this information, also encouraging our customers, your constituents, to download the app. So the mobile app, we are on our third CRM customer relationship management system, which tracks any city service that comes in. So if someone's reporting a pothole or a street
Just, councilor Sufferton has a question about the handout.
Sorry, real quick, I may be ahead of, you're already probably going there, but this will also be blasted out digitally or?
Yes, we can, we can do that. What councilor Sufferton is showing is a lovely laminated flyer and it has on there the QR codes for the app, so that you can pass those on. We have flyers. We can make this for your ward meetings or any other functions that you might be attending to bring these with as well. The app, we'll talk about that, that's perfect timing. The app is in a, really a great app. It's for Android and Apple. What's really nice about it, and we really encourage people to use it, is that it will pick up your location. You can put in the request to service, like I mentioned, like a pothole. You can attach videos and photographs if needed. So it's a really nice feature to have with the app or with 311. We currently, you cannot report anything anonymously with the app, only on the web portion. However, that is being upgraded so that people can report things anonymously. That was a really important feature for our new CRM is to allow our customers to report things without having to leave their, their current information. Just a little bit about the system. We are open Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. However, we have the ability to open at a moment's notice. All our call takers, our 311 operators can work remotely. We've, we open for weather events, we open for different functions within the city or even like the most current one besides storms was the water main break. We were open for, to assist customers, even though it was on the Skokie side. It was important for our, our residents to have a place to contact and get up-to-date information. We are, you can contact us by phone. 311 has a live chat and a text. We're excited about our text because it is a live two-way text with, sorry.
Council member Newsma has a question.
Yes.
Thank you, this is a question for two or for Luke. When we, as council members, get emails or phone calls about potholes or garbage pickup or anything, what would you prefer that we do? Do we want to, do you want to forward that email? Can we put in a 311 request? Does it really matter?
So I strongly encourage that you, you encourage the customer to use the 311 system and to put the information in. You can forward the email to our 311 center email address. Couple things about that, thank you for, for bringing that up. We are really, it's really important to us to provide equitable services for all, all the wards within the city. There's been internal studies done and we have, all of the data has shown that using the system has provided this. And that is so important to us. And we do realize people reach out to their, to their council members. It's okay to forward to us their 311 center email. What we encourage, though, is we will use the customer's email information so that they're getting the correspondence and it's taking you out of, out of trying to get the information to them. It's documented in the system and there's accountability behind that as well. So we really, really encourage that. So that, does that cover that?
So we could say, hey, thank you for your email. Can you just submit a 311 request? Here's the link or just call 311. That's a thing we could do.
You can absolutely do that. You can even forward the email to our 311.
We could create a 311 request by forwarding it to you. We could ourselves put it in a 311 request from ourselves.
You could. I, I would not encourage you to, to actually take that on. And the reason being is that if someone's using the app, that person is going to be logged in. If they give their information, they will get the correspondence back on what's happening with it, so the pothole. So it's been filled or we're waiting equipment, we're waiting for, the weather has delayed us. That information will be corresponded back to the person. If you use your information, I'm sure you've already experienced that you will get the correspondence back. So, so.
So if we're forwarding an email, that should go to 311@cityofevanston.org?
So they can, if it's as easy as they can do, 311center@cityofevanston.org. And I believe, thank you chief for passing out the flyers, it's on there as well. And that is monitored the five days a week. We also, on Sundays, we check if there's a certain amount of voicemail. We actually We actually clear the voicemail on Sunday, so customers aren't waiting for--
So, you'd prefer we forward an email to 311center@cityofevanston.org?
Yes.
Have a vent to Edgar if it's about a pothole.
Yes, absolutely. And it will get done, I don't want to say quicker, but, sorry Edgar, but it will definitely, the follow-through, because it will go right into the system. And what's really nice about our system is taking the pothole, for example, it will go in the system, and it's automatically routed to Don Cornelius and his team, and then the customer is getting a response that says, please anticipate X amount of time, here's our contact information. So, it really provides really good customer service, because for us at 311, our product is customer service, so we really, that kind of takes everyone here out of it. And the services, we really encourage, if they contact one council member, you know, we just want to make sure that people are getting the same equitable service all the way through.
So, here's what I will do. If I, my next pothole email, I will reply to that person and copy the 311 email and just say, hey, by copy of this email to the 311 department, I'm initiating a 311 request. Standby for action and feedback from the appropriate staff member.
Absolutely. And customers can sign up for either email responses, text responses. We even have a phone response, and that is not where the teams in the city is actually dialing a number, but when they put in a comment, it will turn it into a phone call. Because we're well aware that all our customers are not, may not use technology, may not have access to technology, and it's important to provide services or a way for people to communicate, not just by a computer-based system.
Sorry to keep filling this--
No, I didn't even need to write the--
Yes, I think we'll all, you know, the new folks, you'll get some of these emails every week that can be dealt with in a matter of, you know, a few seconds if you forward the email. Where it becomes more tricky is hearing from a constituent that has reached out to 311, and they're on their third or fourth try, and they haven't, there hasn't been resolved yet to their satisfaction.
I would, and that's a really good example, because that might be something on our end where someone didn't respond to the customer. And what I would do is reach out, you could, I think Luke can guide on where to direct that, but we can follow up and pull up any of the 311 requests. We'll reach out to the department. We'll reach out and find out what's happening and ask for an update. Because I think that, that's part of our, that I don't think, it's part of our customer service level, and if customers aren't being responded to, then we're not doing our job. So, there are things that do happen, and I think it would be important to follow up with that.
Last and not least, maybe you're going to get to this. All the 311 data that we're collecting over years, how can we make the most use of that? And how are you reporting that?
So, we've had three systems, and most recently, we launched November of 2024. And all the data was brought over from when we launched, from 2011 into our system. So, I would, a lot of the departments use it for their goal setting, their budget setting, their percents of what, of how much they're doing 311 requests. So, I think there's a lot of ways to use it, whether it's budgeting, staffing would be another, our services, what we provide, are we, should we provide A and not B? Should we add certain services? I think there's a lot of ways that we can look in the data. And as long as we're talking about reporting, every Friday, you'll receive a ward report, which pretty specific information. It's automated in the system. It's a very robust reporting system. We also have online a live performance dashboard. We encourage everyone to look at that. It's on our 311 page, and it's called Performance. And you can look at, the data for this one, though, is the current system. So, it's clean data from November 24 to now. Does that, okay, did anyone--
Luke.
Thank you, Mayor. Just very briefly, I was just going to say that in the 311 platform, obviously, in addition to allowing us to have equitable service delivery, to your point I was going to make a few minutes ago, is that if 100% or nearly 100% of the service requests are flowing through 311, that helps us make better data-driven decisions and captures that information. Sometimes, things do fall through the cracks, and that's where a constituent might reach out to a council member and saying, hey, we're overdue on the service request, or it didn't get handled correctly. And then, in that case, we would ask the council member to include 311, the director, deputy city manager, if appropriate city manager, so that we can address that oversight.
And I'll leave, I have my business cards. I'll leave them on the table for those situations. I do ask, though, that if I copy my chain of command when it's something different like that, I appreciate it, and not have to not use a 311, not use 311 email for that. Just really--
Hold on, one second. Councilmember Davis.
This is very specific to me, but I was wondering, well, first, I sometimes worry about like just pushing constituents off on 311 without being sure of whether or not they've been satisfied with their response, or they're getting a timely response. And I'd like to suggest that maybe we'd be able to CC people if we want to, or if they want to be added, the same way I think--
To CC what?
To CC, so add, so that people, multiple people can get emails, the same way that I believe is currently possible for the FOIA request. I think we're allowed to have multiple people receive those communications. And my special request is that I know that we have Ryan Field Ask a Question, and I think that all of those are basically me, and I would like to be CC'd on, or get a summary of the things that we received for that question. But I'll follow up an email. I'm sure you can't remember everything we're saying right now.
And actually, thank you for bringing that up. That's a perfect example. If there is something in your ward or in the city that you're specifically working with, or interest, I don't want to say interested in, but something specific that you need, I think the Ryan Field is a great example. If you want to report on all the requests that come in with the comments, we can do that, we can automate it. I believe, Councilmember Davis, you are looking to be CC'd. So, is it on copies of emails?
So, maybe copies of emails for the, for sure, for Ryan Field, but I guess when constituents reach out to me about random stuff, like they claim that they've reached out to 311 or the city repeatedly about a pothole, and just so we're all on the same page, I ask them to do one more request, and I want to make sure that I see what the responses, then in those particular instances, it would be nice if I could be CC'd on those emails as well.
I think that's a side conversation, because the CCs are, it's, the system doesn't quite work like that, but there are workarounds where you would be able to look at any of the data. So, for example, if there's a specific issue that has not been addressed, or that the constituent feels that hasn't been addressed, we can make, we can get a copy for any of the council members of the actual request that shows all the comments, things like that. The email, I would not encourage anyone to get a lot of 311 emails and be copied on that, but we can definitely work and put together reports for something you need. You could also use 311 and create your own service request if you were creating, completing or getting data. We've used it for budget. We've used it surveys. We've used, you know, if someone's interested in something, Ryan Field, Foster School. So, we're, we can tailor-make any type of request that you would like internally or externally.
Do you think what might be more appropriate is to ask them to file a 311 request, then ask for the ID, and if we want to check in on the request, we can just ask, give you the ID and ask like what the status is or how it's going?
Yeah, that works too.
Okay.
Yeah. I think, and for those that are newer, if you want to, or even seasoned council members, I'm happy at any time to sit down and show you how to use the system, what's in the backend of the system. We're very transparent, and as I mentioned, it's like my baby, so I like talking about it. I don't, also don't want to go over my time. I just, I just want to, I'm sorry, any other questions?
Yeah, there's lots more questions. Councilmember Head of House.
All right. I love questions.
I'll just share for Councilmember Davis. I know Sue has given me, shown me, given me a demo of the system. A lot of that information's pretty easily searchable once you have the login, and I think for folks, especially new folks, from the City of Evanston main page, at the bottom, there's a link to internal, if you can log in there. And I can't remember exactly, under Applications--
Yep.
It used to be--
It's a Q Alert. But, Q Alert, yep.
And so, you can, a lot of that stuff, you can look up, because like sometimes, rather than emailing Sue or staff members, I'll just go and look up, you can look up by the constituent's address, and if they entered it correctly, you can see the whole history of what they've requested from that.
And we're happy, thank you for sharing that, and we're happy to provide logins. I actually believe that, definitely, and spend a little, you know, we could do a quick remote check-in call and walk you through it. There is nothing in that, just in our system, that should not be transparent to all of you, and that you might find that beneficial as well.
Councilmember Newsma.
Thank you. Also, to Councilmember Davis and the newcomers, you probably don't want to be in the loop on every single 311 call, because that's probably 100 emails a day in some cases.
At least, we're working, we're actually, our email system is overloaded, that it actually locks, and we're working with IT very closely to come up with what's next with that. So, yes.
But we do have, with the weekly report we're getting, a log of every 311 call from our ward--
Correct.
--with all the information.
Yes.
I prefer to get that report once a week rather than, you know, as they come in--
Yes.
--throughout the course of the weekend. I would, just now being made aware of the fact that we can get into the system ourselves and swim around a little bit.
Okay, yes.
It would also be helpful to, if it's possible, to have some kind of geocoding. If, I'm not sure if 311 interfaces with our GAS system, but I'd like to see a heat map of what's going on and what areas of the ward--
There is heat maps, heat maps available for any of the reports. We can do a heat map, and you can also crunch down by ward. So, it is, the overlays are already in the system, so that you can look at that up specifically, and you're not limited to just your ward. It can be any ward. And we can put any overlay, mapping overlay in the system with the help with IT, of course. So--
Thanks.
You're welcome. All right. And then, I just, really, very quickly, if you would like any of us to attend any of your ward meetings or functions or festivals, we'd love to go out and about. We have an amazing donated car from Autobahn. We also have bilingual call takers. Want to make sure that we share that information. And reach out to me if you have any questions. I appreciate your time, and thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Clerk Mendoza.
I'm going to stay up here, so. So, some of the key responsibilities of the Clerk's Office, the Clerk's Office is a keeper of the seal, so if you ever hear any of your constituents say they need a certified document, whether it be for travel or they want a certified ordinance, you will experience this a lot when there's pins that are separated in your ward. People actually need a certified ordinance in order for that ordinance to be registered with a recorder of deeds. Usually, in those instances, Community Development reaches out directly to us, and they let us know that this is necessary. Just note that certifications do cost money, according to our city code, $3, and if people want additional shipping, there's an administrative fee for shipping as well. We also do vital record management for the City of Evanston. So, the City Clerk's Office actually approves all the births and deaths and burials in term, in any transportation of people who have passed in the City of Evanston. So, if you encounter someone that was born in Evanston, has, and needs that service, please, and they're having a hard time with that service, reach out to us. We, the birth and death certificates, actually, most municipal Clerk's Offices don't bring in any revenue. This is actually one of the line items that does bring some revenue into the city, between 80 and 100,000 a year. Oh, sorry, I'm wrong. The City Clerk's Office also manages 4,000 FOIA requests a year, and we collaborate with 140 staff in the municipality in order to fulfill those requests. We are also ensuring that the city code is updated. We send ordinances out for signature and resolution, and then we are the place where you can find those final documents. If you ever see any issues in the city code, please reach out to us, and we have a way that we track any corrections and issues that need to happen. It is a very manual and human process, and so if you encounter any issues, let us know. We also provide election services. It is really important to understand that the City Clerk's Office collaborates with the Cook County Clerk's Office to, who, and the Cook County Clerk's Office manages the elections. So, they are the ones that designed the ballot. They're the ones that like ensure people are listed and the program works and all the equipment gets delivered. We are simply hosting the Cook County Clerk's Office in our buildings and ensure that we are good hosts and that those operations go well. But when it comes to local elections, we manage the petition part of the election. In addition to that, it's just been a tradition, it's not necessarily a requirement, where we've, we've provided guidance on how to get on the ballot. And it's not legal advice, it is just guidance, and it's a general overview on how to run for office. We always ask people that they seek their own legal counsel if they have just more specialized questions with that matter. We also manage the small donor fund, which is, was set by the City Council, and we do voter registration throughout the community. So, if you have any events for us to go to, especially during the summer, let us know. The City Clerk also, we keep the council records, so we do the minutes, the actions, and public comment. For example, the actions are purchasing staff, they're not able to actually, and our staff are not actually able to execute documents until we send them the action. So, we send them the actions. We usually try to do it fairly quickly, sometimes it's delayed depending on how many items and how long the city council meetings are, because we actually have to review and watch these meetings twice. So, the longer the meetings are, the longer it takes us to review what happened at those meetings with detail. That's why, another reason why I asked that you please CC me anytime there's an amendment, because we are not, since we're trying to send out the actions immediately, it really delays the process if you're not sending me any amendments, and I'm having to search or figure out who did the amendment while you're up here. I know it's not necessarily the first thought to CC the clerk, but it is really going to affect how that action is recorded in the actions and how our staff can execute those things, those contracts, in that week, actually. So, delay the whole process, even for our vendors. We also manage the application process and agenda, the agenda placement and compliance and term management for boards, commissions, and committees. So, it is very important for you guys to understand and distinguish the role of the Clerk's Office in the management of boards, commissions, and committees. We do not, we try our best to let the public know what vacancies are available. We are only a staff, we have two full-time staff and myself. So, it is really, really important for you to understand that we are managing the process to which a person applies and gets appointed to a board, commissions, or committees. We are not necessarily doing like ongoing outreach, and we're not at like, you know, just, we try our best to do that outreach. If we are scheduled to be in an event, we have a flyer where we give people and we let them know. The mayor and I were at an event recently at the OX where we let people know that there were vacancies, but just keep in mind that we do the administrative part of that process, and it's very important to distinguish our role in the Clerk's Office. We also manage citywide mail for all departments, so any interdepartmental mail and any mail that comes in for the city and staff, we are the ones delivering, putting that mail in individual boxes. So, we're manually sorting mail on a daily basis. So, our staff goes in, like we have a clear understanding of where mail is supposed to go, so we're doing that process. That's an internal process, and no USPS cannot do that themselves, and they will not do it. So, that's just the way it works for all large buildings, all large organizations. And we also do temporary accessibility placards for people that have temporary disabilities. We have, we're required to have the landlord leases by ordinance. We do notary services. We do-- We do notary services. We do the record retention and destruction. So we manage the retention schedules for our documents. And then we also manage the destruction part in collaboration with the recycling division. We also receive all of the legal notifications for the city of Evanston. So we, all the summons, if you Google my name, yes, there's going to be a lot of summons or lawsuits on my name because we receive them in the office. And we also manage portions of public access and transparency. So like think Public Comment and Open Meetings Act. So here is another example of. So, oh, I think this is backwards on my side. Okay. So we also manage the, the submission and like the compliance, right? Like we streamline the management of the different certifications that people have to submit to the city. So we, it allows us to like, we use Submitable because Submitable allows us to like, track who has become compliant and who hasn't. So the system allows us to track individuals and see what, in what step of compliance they're in. So we ask that everybody, when they're trying to become compliant with any of these five points of compliance that they use our, our system, if you're having trouble finding the link, please email us. It can also be found on the internet under the clerk's office. But for example, we manage for OMA certification, you would submit that through Submitable. All elected officials, appointed officials and BCC staff are required to do OMA training, the OMA training certification within 90 days after appointment. And I created this like table for you, like it ensures open and transparent meetings, the FOIA training, the FOIA officers. We also, anything that's in blue, we, it's just like an additional requirement for the city of Evanston. It may not be required by code in the state of Illinois, but we, we require it with our local code. So we have FOIA officers do the certification, elected officials, and then covered staff. So any staff that are working on FOIA request. So that would be like our record staff. That's due annually. We suggest at least for elected officials, if you could do that training annually because the law does change, it would just be great for you to understand what your obligations are. And you're also required to do it, for example, if you're a FOIA officer, within 30 days after you're appointed. So for example, me, I'm required to do it in the next 30 days because I have been re, like I had been elected again. So every single time you're elected or every single time you're appointed to that position, you have to do the, the certificate. And yes, it's the same for OMA. So I have verified this with the Attorney General's Office. So even the council members who have previously done their OMA certificate, you still have to do your OMA certificate for a second time. And it's the same thing for BCC members. Every time they're appointed, again, they have to do their OMA certificate for a second time. For, and then FOIA just prepares you on how to respond to records requests. The ethics training is for elected and appointed officials. And then HR manages the staff ethics training. So we only manage the, 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 the ethics training for the elected and appointed officials. That is due annually and it, it promotes ethical and impartial services. The SEI filing, which is a statement of economic interest that is mandated by the state of Illinois, but managed by the Cook County Clerk's Office, that is for elected officials, appointed officials, and then all covered staff under that statute. That is required to be filed annually by May 1st or within 30 days after you're appointed. And that is a disclosure for financial, for your, it discloses your financial interest. And then we have an additional compliance that is set by the city council locally, which is a local financial disclosure. That is the covered people are elected officials, appointed officials and covered staff. And that is due by July 1st. We will send you a Submitable link for you to do all of these things. Or you should have already received it. And then that just adds another local level of transparency. We'll move on if no one has questions. So the Freedom Information Act. So the purpose is just ensuring public access of government records. Just keep in mind, we do process over 4,000 requests a year and it's looking and trending that way again this year. And it is essential for the city council members, the mayor and the city clerk to, for requests to go through the FOIA process to ensure proper organization, timely processing and necessary redaction review. So it's the same idea as the 3-1-1 system. So just keep in mind, like, there's 130 staff who are responding. Anybody that you reach out, any, anyone for records requests, if you reach out to the city manager's office, they're already, there's a queue, there's an active queue of about, at all times, of 120 to 160 active FOIA requests. So just trying to circumvent this system or the way that we manage processing those FOIA requests really delays the process for everyone else. And your people who don't have the access that you have are competing with you to get that staff's time to respond to their FOIA request. And we're trying to create an equitable process by requiring everybody to use Next Request. So if you need any documents for the purposes of legislating or the purposes of just understanding how to do something, we ask that you please always use Next Request. You are, if, look, if you don't want to like open up Next Request and submit it yourself, feel free to email the city manager. The city manager will only just forward that to me. And then I, honestly, I will just submit it into the system and then you will be in the queue. And we will assign the appropriate staff member. And as you can see, like in 2021, when I started office, there was about 1,100 requests a year. And then we're about, I mean, we were at 4,000 last year. And then just, this is request, it's not necessarily because people don't believe in transparency or people are having a hard time with like what we're doing. Just keep in mind, like, there's more car accidents, right? There's, there's burglaries that happen. There's just simply someone filing a police report because of an increased number of identity theft that happens online to seniors. So there's all kinds of different types of FOIA requests. But just keep in mind that if you're competing, if you're asking staff to focus on your document request and not on the request of your constituents, that's just delaying the process for them. So we ask that you are equitable and then you use the system. And then civic engagement through BCCs. This is where we really, really, really need your support. Do you have a question?
Yeah, I have a question if it's, if it's all right about, about FOIA.
Yeah.
Why, you were starting to talk about this. Why are we getting so many? And is there anything we can do as a city government to make more information more generally and regularly available that would take some of the pressure off of the FOIA system? Or is there any other thing we could do differently to minimize the number of requests that are required?
Yeah, I think we do a fairly better job than most local governments at being transparent. I can, I have attended statewide, regional meetings and we post more documents than the average person. I think it's just continuing to teach the public where they can find documents, encouraging people to use the website first prior to submitting a FOIA request. I can guarantee you that more than half of these requests, when we receive them, I'm literally just sending them a link from the website. Like the document is on the website or is in Laserfish that is publicly available. And, or it's in a council packet. The contract is in a council packet or it's on Laserfish under all of our contracts. All of our contracts are actually posted publicly. So it's just ensuring that you teach the public that these things are available to them. We are being transparent and there's nothing that is being hidden from them. And, and just having that, building that general sense of trust, right? The other things that you can't control are out of your control, right? You can't teach someone how to drive. You can't tell, you know, someone to not be a victim of, of a scam or identity theft. Like those things are out of your control, but the things that are, are in your control.
But if there was some category of records that by an act of council, we could say, you know what? Publish these on the website so that they're.
I can guarantee you, you don't have to say publish these on their website. They are on the website.
Okay.
Right? But that's just, the general feeling is that they're not. But if someone files a FOIA request, we're still required by law to fulfill it. So it, you just have to, when you're at your public meetings, if you know you're going to go in to talk about a, a park redesign and you know that those redesigns are on the website, just let them know. They're on the website. This is where you can find them. If that's the first thing you do at the beginning. Yeah, that's what you do at the beginning of anything.
One of the challenges we have with so much information being available and posted somewhere on the website is finding exactly what you're looking for.
And that's why we're working on the redesign of the website right now. So it's more user friendly. And then we've also created a data govern, the IT department created a data governance team. So we're, we're going to have a team that focuses on the release of data and how that looks to the public, right? And then to, that we're also, you know, the, hopefully the idea of that too will be like, if I know, Stephanie, because I'm getting 100 FOIA requests about Ryan Field, that we just need to post all those things. That needs to be the thing at the top that we can, we can focus on those efforts. And there's all other things, right? Like the request for emails or, or things like that. Or in many cases, you guys get an email and then you tell someone, hey, like I got this email FOIA. You know what? If you're going to do that, just forward the email to the person. They're, they're going to receive it anyway. There's no, there's no need for them to go through the FOIA system if they already have the email in their hands. Like, it's just like little things like that. That's a huge, huge help. Like just.
So one of the metrics for success in our website redesign will be hopefully a reduction in the number of FOIA requests.
Yeah. And I, there's some things that are not going to stop like car accidents, the need to redact police reports, right? Like those things are not going to stop. Yes, it is one of the metrics for success. But I, I will tell you right now, like on this dial, since we're all here together, is that we need at least one more permanent FOIA person, just managing FOIA. It is, it is a big job. You're talking about redacting, fulfilling, closing, assigning requests. And redacting is redacting all kinds of different documents from police reports to emails to, I mean, just any, any variety of documents. Yeah.
Councilmember Harkaris.
Thanks for bringing up the website redesign. I will also commend City Manager Stowe. He's been great at getting ahead of things and setting up specific websites when we have a lot of requests. And that's been really helpful to have, you know, someplace where we can kind of send people when we have a hot button topic. One thing, as we're looking at the, the redesign, I know we could probably do some search engine optimization going forward because it, while things are there, sometimes it's not necessarily the top return. And I think, I know that's probably on your list of goals for the new site, but I just wanted to bring that up. But looking forward to whenever that, I know it's been ongoing for a while. City Manager Stowe, if you could maybe share the timeline, I think that'd be helpful to know.
Yeah, I don't know the exact timeline off the top. We already have started the process of the city website overhaul. And then also concurrently, we're, as Clerk Mendoza mentioned, the data governance group is also starting to form, which will also do an overhaul of our open data portal.
That's great. Thank you.
Yeah. And then another thing too, as far as like search engine optimization, we're trying to slowly get all of the departments to have their final documents in Laserfish because then people can go in there and then search for the documents that they need. And we'll also be, as we do that, be providing guidance on how to best title your document. But Laserfish also keeps like metadata on the file. So that when you're searching in there, you can, there's different like data. It'll, it'll just find the document that you need. I'm not that technical, but it's just an easier, it's a database that's just for us, right? Like it's, we're not competing with Google. The current site that we have has a Google search engine in it. So it will bring up other things outside of the organization.
Thank you. And I'll add, just like from my IT background, I know we're a little bit unique in that, especially when you're looking for documents, you know, we can have ordinances that have been probably amended 10, 20 times. And I, I'm sure that probably adds to the difficulty of the search engine, you know, optimization on that end. But I'm glad that that's a problem we're looking into and trying to get better.
Yeah. Yeah. And as part as onboarding departments into Laserfish, that's other guidance that we're, we're providing is ensuring that like documents are watermarked. Like right now, if you go in and look at all the council packets, nothing is watermarked. I mean, you are, yeah, I understand it's being approved, but it's not approved until it's approved. Like those things should be watermarked because they're currently, at least, you know, we know what, which one was the final document. There's. From a person that spends most of her week looking at documents, I can tell you like, if we just simply watermark documents, it'd be even easier to fulfill a FOIA request.
Thank you.
I don't know what happened. Doesn't love me anymore. Okay. BCC, civic engagement through BCCs. So again, the clerk's office manages the administrative process of BCC, BCCs. And then you guys see that final process as an agenda item on the agenda, which then you consider if you're going to approve or not, right? Under the consent of the city council, I think it says in the council, in the ordinance. But we have over 30 active boards, commissions and committees. We, and over 200 members. One of the things that you need to understand is that we manage the application process, the terms, the compliance and the resignations of BCC members. So that's a lot of people, you know, that there's, you saw how many points of compliance we manage for city, for city staff, for board members, for ourselves, for council members. And then on top of that, you add 200 other members. It is a, a lot of work. So we ask for your support as council members. You're out in the community. You're not stuck in an office throughout the week like I am. We ask that you go in and see what vacancies we have. And please remember to ask community members to become involved through BCCs. And that will help us have less vacancies. And if anyone needs help with the application process, we're happy to walk them through that process. They can come even sit down in the clerk's office. We can help them apply. Or if they have any questions about the application process, that's where we become involved. And I know sometimes you see a lot of people in the clerk's office. You're like, wait, well, how can you not do all this work if you have a lot of people in the clerk's office? Do not let your eyes deceive you. We have two full-time staff and myself. And we have a variety of people that are in and out of the clerk's office throughout the week for a few hours. And they help us with the data, analyzing data. So analyzing documents, labeling documents, so like the backend work. Some people that are, and we have like some people that help us with constituent services. So we have a federal work study program with Northwestern. We have an apprenticeship program with the health department. We work in the summers with the mayor youth job program. We work with Haven Youth and Family Services and the youth job center here in Evanston. And then we have a lot of motivated volunteers. So, and there's a nice picture, but that's, that's it. Thank you.
Okay. So we now move to presentations from divisions and departments. I'm warning everybody, I'm going to be absolutely ruthless about timing. We are, we are behind. I'm going to actually just switch on the five-minute timer. And hopefully you won't need all that time anyways, but it'll be there just in case.
Good morning, councilmembers, mayor, city manager Stowe. Thank you so much for offering us this opportunity to present to council this morning. My name is Cynthia Vargas. I am the communications and community engagement manager for the city. Thank you so much for being here. Thank you so much for being here. So the Communications Division lives or works under the City Manager's Office. Oh, so sorry. Oh, you're pressing buttons already. And we have a team of six. So we are tiny but mighty. And that team consists of our City Manager Luke Stowe, our Deputy City Manager Karina Sanchez, myself, and then many of you work alongside Jesse Mayo very often. If, if not, if you haven't yet, you will, you will be working with Jesse a ton. So Jesse Mayo is our Community and Engagement Coordinator. And then everyone who is in charge of our broadcasting, you see them running around here, fixing all the microphones, fixing our sound system, our lights, is Anderson Castillo, Broadcast Operations Coordinator, Gary, and Gary Price Broadcast Production Assistant. A lot of people wonder when I tell them, what do you do? I am a Communications Manager. What does that consist of? It consists of a lot. And we're only, Jesse and I are the only two that are really working on all of these different tasks. Karina has helped a lot. Luke helps a lot. But essentially we do content development. That include, that includes all editing of all newsletters. We have many newsletters throughout the city departments. We have Health and Human Services. We have a senior service Levy Center Newsletter. We have Enjoy Evanston, just so many different newsletters. We look them over, we edit them. Any documents that are coming in where directors need assistance, we'll edit those too. Video production, feature stories, newsletters go out once a week every Thursday. And we collect content between Friday and Wednesday. And we also do council member newsletters and as I mentioned, other departments. We also do website oversight. As you heard, we are overhauling our website at this time. We are working on the redesign and ensuring that our website is ADA compliant. Media relations, we work with media every single day. Every single day we have an inquiry from our media, whether it be locally or from our broadcasting over in Chicago. We do media management, media tracking and response, press releases and media advisories, social media management, oversights of various departments. Various departments do have social media pages, so we ensure that all comments on there are not violating our social media policy. So we're constantly looking at those pages. Our, our job is kind of a 24/7 job. We have Facebook accounts, Instagram, LinkedIn, and X formerly known as Twitter. We do all the social media content planning as well, and we assist other departments that have social media pages. We work on graphic design and brand management. Brand is huge. Jesse is a stickler for this, so stick to our brand if you ever have to do a presentation. That's a, that's, you know, a city initiative or city-driven, feel free to reach out. We can get you those links. Photo library, we have a huge photo library and broadcasting. And we do video, you know, Anderson takes care of all our BCC video recordings, our YouTube channel and all public meetings. We do all administrative work. We work collaboratively with the mayor, council members, deputy city managers and the city manager for other type of content. And then I have to move on. Council's communications, you all have one monthly, you all can request one monthly digital newsletter. Must be requested seven days in advance. One short ward meeting reminder, digital newsletter per month requires 48 advance notice. Two postcard mailings to your ward per year. Pre-tempelated design must be requested three weeks in advance. And then the ward meeting schedule, we'll schedule 30-minute meetings with you because those we want to get done usually at the beginning of the year so that we can get all your meetings in the calendar. Comms goals, we're trying to work for, from a more data-driven perspective. We want to collect more stats to be able to tell stories in our content, work more strategically and proactively, update our website and make it ADA compliant, and then track all media messaging, and then continue to enhance all of our media partnerships. If you have any questions, feel free to reach out. This is my contact information. Thank you.
Any questions? All right. Thank you, thank you. Yolanda.
Oops. There we go. All right. Edgar's going to help me out by handing out some, our strategic plan. So last year we completed our strategic plan. And then also we're handing out to you our latest end of the year, 2024, our, our annual plan. So the mission of the Evanston Public Library, when we renewed our strategic plan last year was changed. We now want to connect our diverse community through learning, discovery, shared experiences by providing equitable access to resources, fostering personal growth and creating inclusive spaces. If I can get the right, right here. All right, there we go. We updated our vision as well as our values, which was something that the community really spoke to us about. And we accomplished our mission through building inclusive spaces, empowering community engagement, lifelong learning for all, optimizing our resources responsibly, nurturing relationships and partnerships, and growing together sustainably. And this was a real key factor for us because the city has the CART plan and the library had never been following that. So now we are getting in alignment with the city. So I just want to share a few highlights with you of what we've been working on within our strategic plan because as we move forward as an organization, that is what is going to be our guiding light. We are making sure that we're looking at what the city is doing. And so in this last year, in our Q1 for this year, we completed our website. So we have already upgraded our website. Our app is going to be finalized, I think in July, and that's just the logo. But a lot of time and effort went into that. We decided we wanted to have a metric and have at least 80% user satisfaction. And we actually achieved 82%. So we're really proud of that. We are working on developing our comprehensive marketing plan. We already work very closely with Cynthia and the other city marketing professionals. And so we make sure we're communicating our message as well as yours on our website and in our social media. We reclassified our community engagement manager, manager to be an equity and engagement manager. And that is because we had also completed the DEIB plan, our Diversity Equity Inclusion and Belonging Plan. And so we are moving forward with that plan, even though we find ourselves in a different place with the federal government. So in the next quarter, a couple of things that we're working towards is we are working on our development and advancement plan. And that is really critical because of the cuts in federal funding. Now, we at the library only receive less than 1% of our funding through grants. And so we are not heavily impacted, but we recognize that our community partners are. And we work with a lot of different community partners and nonprofits. And so we are looking to try and beef up how much money we're raising from community members in order to sustain some of those programs that have become so well-loved here in Evanston. We are working on realigning our staff resources. So as you know, staffing costs keep going up. And so for us as an organization, we have to keep moving forward with that. In our next Q through the end of the year, we are going to be working on our master facilities plan. We are working with the city to complete the city MOU, the library, as you know, the main library. We don't own any of our buildings. We occupy city buildings. And so we are working to improve the memoranda of understanding that we have with the city and ensure that those services are being delivered equitably. We do pay the city currently. It's about $350,000 a year for administrative services. We are exploring a contract. I know last year I did get some questions from council. Hey, are we exploring what that cost actually is? What is the cost of those services? So we agree and we have recently hired a consultant and we are going to be looking at what those actual costs are. So we will continue with our great programs and we are going to be also working on data tracking. I know I've heard a little bit of that here today. We are interested in putting up, we used to have a data dashboard. We're going to continue with that and we're looking at ways we can do that. There are a number of software opportunities that we have. And in fact, one of the consortias that we belong to is looking at supplying that through their funding that they get each year in order for us to have an analytics program that will be public. And that is my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions? Thank you very much. Alex.
All right. Good morning, everyone. Again, for the record, Alex Rugge, Corporation Counsel. So a quick overview on the Law Department. You do have an in-house legal department, which is unique for municipalities. There's several in the area that have in-house legal departments, the Village of Skokie, the Village of Oak Park, and of course, the City of Chicago. So the Law Department here in Evanston is five full-time attorneys, myself, the Deputy City Attorney Cynthia Granfield, I have three assistant city attorneys, Brian George, Kathy Penrose, and Matt Slidaway. And then we have two support staff, Kena Robinson is our paralegal and our legal coordinator is Lolita Thomas. In January of 2024, the City Safety Division also moved from the Human Resources Department to the Law Department. And so we have two safety specialists, Eileen O'Neil and David Brichetto. Just a little bit of a overview on what the Law Department handles for all of you. I won't read the slide, but there's some great information if you guys all have an opportunity to do it. So we do handle about 80% of the litigation in-house, which is quite a lot for such a small department. But it is always our goal to be handling 80%. As some of you know or may not know, but the city's Law Department has had some staffing issues over the last decade. I'm happy to report that we are about to be fully staffed for a complete year for the first time in a very long time. So that being fully staffed significantly helps the city and the Law Department in achieving its goal of 80% litigation in-house. We also work on drafting all the ordinances and resolutions that you see come before you. We advise the city council and all the boards, commissions and committees on legal compliance. And then we work on legal compliance with all of our client departments that you'll see here presenting today. These are some legal deliverables that I have up here. It's just the amount of resolutions and ordinances we draft, fees paid on outside counsel. And for judgments, you can see that over time, as we become fully staffed, those fees decrease. So it is a significant benefit for the city. We also process the liquor licensing for the city and staff the liquor commission. And then we respond to requests for legal assistance from all of the client departments. This year we are already at 310, or no, I'm sorry. Last year we handled 310 legal assistance requests. This year, as of April, we're already close to 200. So we are tracking up in those requests. FOIA requests that we respond to and help the Clerk's Office. You can see they went down a little bit in 2023, but again, back in 2024. Just requests that the Law Department was specifically assigned to was over 400. Where does the Law Department assist all of you? Well, a big place that you guys will be looking to the Law Department is for third-party claims administration. So if you have a resident, reach out to one of you and say, hey, a city truck hit my mailbox or a city tree fell in my car. You will want your residents to file a claims form with the City of Evanston. And that goes through the Law Department. So I've linked the website where the claims can be submitted. But for all of you, if you go on the city's website, there's a tab for departments. You'd click on law and frequently asked questions. That link is in there. If ever you need, you know, a quick direct access to that link, please go ahead and reach out to myself or one of my staff members. The online form asks people to give all the details of the incident, any reports and any estimates for repair. Yes, it is on the city's website. And then liquor licenses, like I said, we do process liquor licenses for the city. We do one-day liquor licensees and then just renewals for the city. So it's about 120 renewals each year and about 130 one-day liquor licenses. My department or the Law Department moved all of this to be online accessible so people can renew and request one-day liquor licenses all online now. So that has expedited the process significantly. And then the Safety Division of the Law Department, it's less public-facing. The Safety Division handles OSHA compliance and safety for our city staff. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Luke.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be brief in the interest of time. Just want to once again say congratulations to all of our newly elected officials. City staff is really excited to work with the 82nd City Council. In addition to today's session, we also made ICMA online training available. It's open for a period of six months and that's been made available to all newly elected officials. I believe everyone has received that link and some council members have already started doing that training. Thank you. Also, we'll be working with Brad Cole, Executive Director of the Illinois Municipal League in early June, at our first meeting in early June to cover self-evaluation, also council goal planning. We've made binders available today for some of the handouts that you're receiving. We had some handouts that were pre-populated and then others that you're receiving today. There's also some logistics stuff about reserving rooms here, building access, business cards, et cetera. We're going to have a roundup email that will go out to all of you shortly on that. So let me run through the City Manager presentation really quickly. These are the divisions and teams within CMO, Administrative Judication, Communications, Finance, Economic Development, Property Tax Assessment, Revenue Collections, Sustainability and Human Resources. Currently under my purview, specifically the CMO Department, which includes the CFO, Chief HR Officer, our Law Department, Police, Fire, Public Works and Community Development. Deputy City Manager Sanchez currently oversees Parks and Recreation, Health and Human Service, Economic Development, Transportation Mobility Sustainability Communications and Administrative Judication. And Tajee Kurs are the assistant to the City Manager. She oversees a variety of different programs and projects, including Arts Council Reparations, Equity Empowerment Commission Support. City Manager Weekly Reports typically come out on Fridays and those include a report from the City Clerk's Office about FOIAs, bids and RPs, other city departments, including zoning and inspection reports, and also legislative update for the Northwest Municipal Commission. In keeping with our Council Manager former government, we ask that you please be sure to copy the City Manager and if applicable, the Deputy City Manager, as well as the Director on all Staff Correspondence and Communications. This is also something that we're firming up in our council rules, which we'll discuss further on Monday evening. We also would ask routine constituent requests be sent to the Department Director and copied to City Manager, Deputy City Manager. Specific directions, staff performance issues, et cetera, should be routed through the City Manager. Also, some important communications you will be receiving or everyone's already been receiving, the daily police notable report. Typically that's a roundup of important police events or incidents in the last 24 or 48 hours. I forward that on to City Council as that comes into me. If there's a fire incident, let's say there's a fire in the second ward, Chief Pollock will call me at whatever hour that might occur. As appropriate, I'll share that with the mayor and the council member, often in real time. And then as more information becomes available, we'll share it more broadly. And then other critical items, like the Skokie Water Incident that occurred a few months ago, that's also something that I would share in real time as best as possible as information comes in with the council. And that concludes my report. Any questions?
Any questions? Seeing none. Mike.
Good morning, Mayor Bis, Clerk Mendoza, City Manager Stowe. And congratulations to everyone on 82nd Councils. I wasn't here Monday to celebrate with you all. My name is Michael Graham, the Administrative Services Director for, I'm the interim Administrative Services Director for the City of Evanston. So here's a little about Administrative Services. Administrative Services is comprised of three divisions, the Information Technology Department, Parking Services, and two departments condensed into one, which is the Facilities Management and Fleet Management Department. IT meets the business and technology needs of the internal and external stakeholders as IT provides support and meets programming, registrations, websites, ADA inclusion via tech. The team also supports the maintenance and implementation of proprietary software systems and applications that departments utilize to provide services and data tracking. Parking Services is responsible for the operations and management of garages, the parking meter program, scofflaw, booting, traffic management, enforcement, towing, monitoring of residential permits and parking lots, establishing parking policies, coordinating with local businesses. coordinating with local businesses, developers, and the Collector's Office to fulfill permitting. Facilities and Fleet Management manages and maintains most of the city's 60-plus facilities, their building systems, and other unique city assets, including park features. In addition, the team manages and maintains over 600 pieces of city fleet equipment. Fleet equipment could be vehicles, trucks, trailers, generators, things of that nature. Some of the disciplines under the Information Technology Department include a Service Desk, Project Management, GIS Services, Data Visualization, Web Network Infrastructure, Telephony, Information Security, Trusted Internal Partners for Digital Transformation, Cloud Migration, Identity Management, and across all business units. Supports over 300 business applications. 300 business applications could be the software systems that all departments are using. It could be something like the 301 system. So we would support all those departments and the different systems. Service Desk alone addresses over 10,000 internal support tickets annually. Infrastructure Services provide network presence at 30-plus sites around the city, over 600 IP security cameras across city buildings and outdoor nodes. So that's all the cameras that we have in this room, things like Fouton Square and Intersections. Managers secure staff and guest wireless networks with over 25,000 unique sessions per month. Parking Services again manages a meter parking program. We have over 2,000 metered parking spaces throughout the entire city between the borders of Howard and Central Street. We have 12 full-time parking enforcement officers that maintain schedules 20 hours per day and six to seven days per week, because in the summer, we go to a seven-day rotation, and in the winter, we go into a six-day rotation. They coordinate the management of 30-plus open parking lots that we collect fees through the meter program or through monthly permits. We help coordinate ADA parking in all retail parking districts and by request. And through the Disabled Parking Permit Program, which is a special program, people with disabilities are able to apply for a permit to have a specific parking space in front of their home specifically for them and their vehicle. We also contribute to the management of three parking garages, 525 Church Street, 821 Davis, and 1800 Maple. The three garages collectively have 3,500 parking spaces that we collect revenues annually to the tune of about $5 million a year. Facilities Management: Over 3,500 service requests are fulfilled annually. Over 11,000 view works, preventative maintenance, repair, and project orders are completed annually. coordinates equipment and resources to support essential city operations. We provide 24/7 support as needed for emergencies after hours response. We do have people on-call. Fleet Management: Over 1,000 preventative maintenance requests annually, over 4,500 vehicles repaired. We also coordinate with all departments and have people available 24/7 should we have breakdowns and concerns during special operations. IT: Some of our initiatives: redesigning city's website, upgrade to the milestone systems, coordinate with the clerk in digitizing records, perform audio and visual upgrades, improves and secure remote access to support hybrid workforces. Some initiatives in Parking Services: We are currently replacing the parking access equipment in the three parking garages. We continue to integrate license plate recognition into how we manage our systems, continue to track revenues, collaborate with FFM and engineering to implement more EV parking chargers and to track usage costs and expense. Administrative Services: We contributed to some of the planning of 909 Davis, and will continue an input on facilities and engineering and CIP projects and continue to planning with other departments as we go with the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sarah?
Good morning. Sarah Flax, Community Development Director. Thank you all for having us here to speak to you about what we do and how we can work together with you. If we can get the slide clicker working. Community Development regulates land use and building structures. And so our goal is to deliver services that are customer-focused rather than regulatory, but that facilitate code-compliant development. I'm not going to read the mission and vision. Takes too long. We have 41 positions, and we have three divisions: Planning and Zoning. That's the group in orange. How to match that up, I don't know. Building and Development Services is green. Grants Management and Compliance is in blue. And we have three administrative staff. We are unique compared with most other suburbs. I think we're probably the only suburb of Chicago that has as robust a grant management group. That's due to partly our nature of our community. We get more entitlement money than most other communities from HUD. Planning and Zoning: What does planning and zoning do? Well, develop plans and policies that relate to land use, complete zoning analysis. And in the weekly report from the City Manager, you can see what activities are going on in your ward. Historic Preservation is another piece of planning and zoning. And that is reviewing any activities, you know, construction activities, either in historic districts or for landmark buildings for certificates of appropriateness. We staff the Land Use Commission, the Preservation Commission, and Planning and Development Committee. Program initiatives of Planning and Zoning. We've got the Comprehensive Plan, and then the zoning will follow that. That's a major initiative right now. And also the Strategic Housing Plan that's under development. We're restructuring Planning and Zoning into two sort of subgroups. Planning and Policy is really focused on exactly that, policy development. But they also process the plan developments and special uses applications. Right now, we have two major plan developments underway, 605 Davis and 900 Clark Street. Some are in the pipeline. Development Services is focused more on implementation. There are many, many zoning reviews that really are done that don't require any kind of special uses or extra going to committees or commissions. They handle those, and zoning reviews are done for virtually every building project as well. So they work very closely with the next group, Building and Development Services. Building and Development Services regulates building construction, renovation, and maintenance. So this is all the plans. When anybody's going to build anything, they have to submit plans for a permit. And we review those for compliance with IBC Code and sort of all of those things, but also city codes, our energy efficiency codes, our bird-friendly ordinance, and our climate resilience types of work. We actually are the first city in the state of Illinois to adopt the new stretch code, which is, has more rigorous energy efficiency than the standard code. That will be being implemented as of December, November, October 1st of this year. And so we'll be working on that. Also inspects all rental housing units on a routine basis and responds to complaints to ensure quality housing and well-maintained properties. And also manages vacation rental licensing and shared housing provider licensing and the vacant buildings registration. What are some of the initiatives in this group? Outreach and education about the stretch code. If you enforce the stretch code, but you don't teach anybody about it, they don't know how to use it. I've already talked a little bit about the other things in that division. So I'm going to go to Housing and Grants. Housing and Grants manages our federal entitlement grants, but also some competitive grants, a major $7 million housing grant from HUD, for example. And oversees the implementation of a lot of different programs, both with federal grant money and city human services. Their initiatives are completing the Consolidated Plan, implementing the Pro-Housing Grant, and managing compliance for over 19 programs that are refunded with our nonprofits. Any questions? And I'll let you go on to the next presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hitesh?
Good morning, Mayor, members of the City Council. Hitesh Desai, Chief Financial Officer. So the Finance Department is one of the divisions of the City Manager's Office. What we do is all the financial operations, including the debt management, cash investment, public safety pension, property tax, working with economic development and the legal for some TIF and revenue-sharing agreements, property tax advocacy service, which is like originally a township function, and obviously special assessment, which is kind of unique to the few cities only in the state of Illinois. The biggest thing, coordinating the annual budget and the annual audit process with the City Manager's Office, City Council, and all the operating departments. And then we staff the Finance Budget Committee, MWDEB Development Committee, Police and Fire Pension Boards, and the Local Board of Improvements. Some of the major functions: Accounting is one of the divisions, mainly doing the day-to-day journal entries, monthly financial reports. Annual audit is a big piece. In the early part of the year, right now, we are going through the 24 audit. Single Audit, which is the federal grants audit, and Year and Audit, obviously, which includes some of the other reporting to the Cook County and the state of Illinois and others. The Budget, obviously, which is like mostly during the last six months of the year. Plan future revenues, expenses, current revenues, where we are in the current year. Projections is a big thing, you know, in light of the volatile economic environment. Capital Projects is a big one here, since we include the Parks and Recreation here, part of the city, the library, water plant where we sell the water. So yeah, capital project is a big challenge, working with Lara and her team and some of the other department. And then, yeah, Finance and Budget Committee, obviously, it's a monthly meeting and going through all and any and all financial items there. Accounts payable, obviously paying to the vendors by name itself. It says what we do. Purchasing, that's the one thing, yeah, which includes the oversight of all the process and procedure for the procurement goods, working with all the departments, RFPs, RFQs, BEATs, procurement process, purchasing manual, and all those kinds of things. And obviously, they are kind of the purchasing manager coordinator, MWDEB Committee. Functions-wise: The Collector's Office is a big one, as its name says. Collector's Office, it collects the money, all kinds of payments, like wheel tax, parking tax, permit tickets, pet license, yard waste, water bills, and adjudication tickets. Accounts receivable: Try to collect the money, enforce if any outstanding payments are there to follow with the vendors, businesses, or residents. And then the payroll, again, all those daily, make sure that everyone is getting paid every other week. Some of the reporting is the quarterly 941, and annual W-2 reporting to the IRS. Programs and initiatives: What are the big things there, you know, and the finals? Annual Audit, which I said that January to July, generally June 30th is the deadline. And then the Single Audit, which is a federal grants audit. Annual Budget: Members of the City Council, kind of two sectors, more high-level, you know, directions, and then work with the departments, and then present in October the proposed budget, and then series of meetings at the ward level and with the council members. Finance and Budget Committee: Second Tuesday every month. And they kind of have a kind of in-depth analysis of some of the major financial policies. MWDEB Committee meets every third Wednesday of the month, and they establish some purchasing process and how to support the minority women disadvantaged in Evanston business initiatives. Property Tax Appeals: This is kind of, as I mentioned earlier, a township function where we do the tax advocacy work and help the residents to file any property tax assessment appeals to the Cook County and whatnot. And Monthly Financial Report: This is a kind of a critical thing. And even quarterly, we include the cash and investment report along with the monthly financial report. That's it. Thank you.
Any questions? Chief Pollock?
Thank you for having me here today. Good morning, Council. My name is Paul Pollock, and I am a proud, humble fire chief for the men and women and young adults of the Evanston Fire Department and the great residents of this city. I'd like to start, we are a fire department, all hazards fire department. We operate 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. We respond to about 12,000 calls. If you know, I'm sure you all know, but our city is a 7.9 square mile city. We respond to 12,000 calls a year, 8,000 of them being EMS, 3,600 being fire and other types of incidents such as special rescues, car accidents, things of that nature. Our average response time is four minutes, and that's from the time of dispatch to the time we arrive at your door. That's a pretty outstanding number, to be honest. It's well beneath our NFPA standards. We have 115 sworn members and three civilians, most of which are members of the local 742. In the summertime, in the summer months, we go up to 260 members as we work with the lifeguards and oversee their operations as well. We have five stations. We have one headquarters. We have five beaches. We have 30-plus apparatus that operates every day. We have five fire engines, two fire trucks, a battalion chief, and three ambulances. Every one of those vehicles are outfitted or staffed with ALS personnel, meaning advanced life support personnel, advanced life support equipment, and they're all paramedics. Meaning, if you don't have an ambulance coming to your house right away and a fire engine shows up first, every one of those members are trained to the paramedic level with all the proper equipment needed, just waiting for the ambulance and the transport to the hospital. We are a ISO Class 1 fire department. You should all be very proud of that. Out of 46,000 fire departments in America, there's only 498 of them ISO Class 1. We are a part of that, and that's thanks to the work that you all do up there. We are an accredited emergency management department, meaning through Cook County, we're able to receive certain types of grants and funding more than others. We have multiple specialized teams: tech rescue, dive, water, surface water, hazmat, drone, CPR. We're trained in multiple levels. We just recently put Squad 21 in service at Fire Station 1, which means it is a fire engine, has water, pumps water, has all the paramedics on. But all of the members on that vehicle are trained to certain disciplines in those areas that I just talked about, hazmat, special ops teams. Here's our organizational chart, not going to go through that. The big thing I wanted to touch on was during an incident, City Manager Stowe did touch on this. If there is an incident happening in your ward, please, I ask that you don't... I'll take any phone call at any time, but during an incident, please don't call during the incident. I will get that information to City Manager Stowe or whatever Deputy City Manager is in charge at that time. They will notify you, and then I will answer any questions afterwards. It just gets quite hectic during an incident to respond. And if I have time in the buggy or an incident commander has time, they will reach out to you as well.
Let me interject here because it's super important. Councilmember Nusma has a question on this, I think. Hold it to the end, then.
We have a few community programs. Public CPR, which I can't tell you how many people we have trained in the city in CPR. Very proud of that. Jennifer Serielli, she was... Jennifer Serielli runs that program, does a phenomenal job with members of this department that train. We have the Fire Explorers, which again, I'm proud of. That started 13 years ago, and from that program, we've hired six members to our department from that program. So it's a great, great program. We do a Citizens' Fire Academy for all members of the city. If they want to try our Citizens' Fire Academy, that's two weeks in every fall. And then we have a Community Emergency Response Team that Emergency Manager, Chief Cool manages. This is just a quick overview of what GEMT Money has done for us. I can get into this later. I know I'm running out of time, so that we could talk about later. But it's helped us tremendously get that third ambulance up. And this year is our 150th birthday as of May 25th.
Councilmember Nusma?
Fully staffed?
We are fully staffed.
Third ambulance is up and running all the time?
Third ambulance has been up and running since July of last year.
And are we going to have another opportunity for that fire training like we did four years ago?
Fire Ops 101? That's a great question. We haven't done it in a while. I will talk to the folks in the local to see if we can get that going again. Sure, we can get something going.
Thanks.
Okay?
Thanks so much. Mike?
Good day, members of the City Council. Ike Obwell, Director, Health and Human Services Department. So the Health and Human Services Department is a certified health department, is actually one of the few municipal health departments in Illinois. Last year, we celebrated 150 years, given that it was established in 1874. It is the second oldest health apartment. Chicago takes a cake here. The mission of the department is to protect, preserve, and promote and establish sustainable partnerships in order for us to do our work. When we are fully staffed, there are 31 of us, individuals who are in the medical, public health, and social service fields, in order for us to carry out the activities of the department. The department is segmented into three divisions. We have the Public Health, Human Services, and Workforce Division. The Human Services Division is designed to assist and help individuals who are vulnerable or those who are low income or no income at all by providing assistance through extensive case management. There are a number of paramount programs under Human Services, one being general assistance. This is a program that is mandated by the state. The case managers review cases and determine eligibility. We have assistant, emergency assistants. This is a program that anyone can qualify for as long as there's an emergency. We have community and relief assistance programs. These are undocumented residents amongst us, where we're able to provide assistance, whether that means rent, food, et cetera. The Arbitration Program, Evanston is very unique to have an arbitration program. Most municipalities do not, I think Evanston is the only one that does. And this program actually advocates, the person advocates for the rights and the care of the residents in our long-term care facilities, resolve complaints, and also escalate matters to the Illinois Department of Public Health when needed. We have about 13 licensed facilities, and what that equates to is 1,600 beds. Any community of our size does not even match this, so you can see the magnitude of work that we do in our arbitration program. Work for development, this is actually a newly established division where we connect individuals to career paths, sustainable, and try as much as possible to ensure their self-sufficiency. There are about three, four programs that we've established that are quite paramount to this division. Aspire, this is a program that we've established with working with Endeavor Health and individuals who are seeking career path in healthcare, able to go through this program to obtain job opportunities, internships, scholarships, et cetera. We have Emerge, it's one of the programs that we augmented, working with our long-term care facilities for those who want to go through hospitality industries and careers. The Local Employment Program is a program where qualified Evanston residents are channeled to a number of construction work projects. These individuals comprise of journeyman, those who have expertise in masonry, carpentry, drivers, et cetera. Public Health, this is a division that is embedded in science, regulation, and enforcement. There are quite an array of services that we provide under public health, one being communicable diseases. We report to IDPH in this regard. There are over 100 notifiable diseases that we respond to. Last year alone, we responded to, investigated 1,200 disease conditions and responded to about 25 outbreaks. We have other programs such as the Food Safety Program. There are about 450 food establishments here, we conduct inspections there. We have our rodent control, we have vector control, West Nile mosquito control, we work with the Nuptseum mosquito baitment district in that regard, beach water testing, long-term care facility inspections, lead poisoning prevention. We have quite a number of public health, community health initiatives, leaf blow enforcement, emergency preparedness, and licenses. E-Plan, this actually is one of the activities that we have to perform as a health department to keep us satisfied. And E-Plan is a project that we undertake every five years. The current E-Plan expires in 2026. Where we able to gather data, indicators, outcomes, and community input to identify what Evanston's health priorities are. And you can see the health priorities down there, advancing mental health, advancing health equity, and climate resiliency. And it's pretty much just highlights those as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Audrey.
Good morning, members of the City Council. I am Audrey Thompson, your Parks and Recreation Department Director. All right, I'll go ahead and get started. All right, Parks and Recreation Department consists of 76 parks, 50 playgrounds, 12 facilities, that's eight community centers, and then four community centers or four facilities that we use for programming, which is James Park, Lovelace, Mason Park, and also the Arrington Lagoon. When you add all of our field houses, then that brings us up to 20 actual facilities. I won't read our mission, but I will say that National Parks and Recreation Association really looks as Parks and Recreation as the heartbeat of a city, and 90% of U.S. adults say that Parks and Recreation is a central and very important part of local government. So our structure, we have three sectors or sections of Parks and Rec, and that's Parks and Recreation Facilities, which is under Deputy City, Deputy Director Michael Callahan, not City Manager. Also, Matt Poole is over Recreation Programming as Deputy Director. And then Community Services, that's Jaron Dorsey, another Deputy Director. Here is our organizational chart. I will say that this, when you look at how many people are actually a part of our department, we actually have 122 full-time and part-time permanent team members. In addition to that, 829 team members, 768 of those are either temp or seasonal, and then 61 are instructors. So at any part of the season, we can go from 225 employees all the way up to 951 employees. Just to look at a little bit about each one of our deputies, Michael Callahan oversees senior services, which is at the Levy Senior Center, Lakefront and Athletics, Chandler, Newburger, as well as Dempster Street during our beach season. He also acts as our capital improvement projects, park maintenance, and fleet and facilities management liaison, and that's between our department, administrative services, and public works. He also oversees all of our food service, which is at the Arrington Lagoon Cafe, Clark Street Beach, Fleetwood, Jordan, Robert Crown, and opening late summer will be Prieto. Then Matt Poole is over all of our recreation programs. And just to really tell you a little bit about what that looks like in the winter of 2023, we had 540, 5,430 participants, and they participated in 632. That went up in 2025 to 770 programs to 6,800 participants. So it just tells you that's just one season of programming for our department. And you can kind of see all of what Matt is in charge of. I'm happy to announce our Farmer's Market opened today. This is our 50th year. I went by before coming here, and it was packed. So really, if you've never been to our Farmer's Market, it is a wonderful weekend event. And then there's Community Services, Jaron Dorsey, who oversees Community and Arts Division, and that's at Fleetwood, as well as Noise. And then also our Youth and Family Services Division and our new program, which is Crisis and Alternative Response Evanston. And so far, our team since, our care team since July 29th has responded to over 1,500 calls. Just a few of our other initiatives. For our divisions, we have seven, seven, which is Community and Arts, Conservation, and Outdoors, Enrichment and Specialty Programs, Inclusion and Accessibility, Lakefront, Senior Services, and Youth and Family Services Division. Looking at many of our programs, I would like to really highlight our Fee Assistance Program. This council or the previous council approved a sliding scale. And just to let you know, in 2024, we gave out in Fee Assistance $219,078. With the new sliding scale, already in first quarter of 2025, we have provided $116,475 in sliding scale Fee Assistance. So many things, I gave you all a cheat sheet that you all will definitely need for Parks and Rec. And I will end by saying I appreciate coming this morning. If I had not been here, I would have had to run the 5K on the lakefront. So I appreciate you all. Have a good rest of your Saturday.
Thank you very much, and your presentation was much quicker than a 5K, so well done. Chief Stewart.
Hi, good morning, Chief Stewart, the Police Department. I'll do a quick overview. Congratulations to the second council. So we are at 143 sworn officers, 52 civilian staff members. So our operations is broken down into three primary divisions, which is the Field Operations Divisions, Investigative Services Administrative Division, and also Support Services. That's me. There are three Deputy Chiefs of Police that are in charge of the divisions, which I'll break down right now. Organizational chart, I report directly to the City Manager. Officer Professional Standards reports directly to me. They consist of a commander and a sergeant. They do internal investigations, they break down complaints that will be made, they will follow up with that administrative rule, and especially responds to resistance, which is really categorized as use of force incidents. They also review every sign we have one. Field Operations is run by Deputy Chief Dan Russell. Under his leadership is Community Relations Unit, Patrol Bureau, and the Traffic Bureau. Investigative Services Admin Division is run by Deputy Chief Melissa Secludy. Under her leadership is going to be the Detective Bureau, both adult and juvenile, Forensic Services, Special Operations Group, and Offices of Administration, and the Training Bureau. Deputy Chief Jody Wright is in charge of Support Services, which entails Communications Bureau, 311 Service Desk Bureau, and our Records Bureau. I want to just highlight really quickly our strategic plan. This was done not only with staff from the Police Department, but also the community, which consisted of community service feedbacks to come up with this plan. The City Manager tasked me with not having a one- or two-year plan, but a long-lasting plan to make implications and to move forward. So the objectives were broken down into four categories of importance, and will continue under the leadership of City Manager to address those issues. Any questions? All right, thank you.
That was fit, that was quick. Thank you, Chief. Edgar.
I'll try to be just as quick. I know we're over.
I don't know, man, it's a high bar.
Thank you, everybody. No, good afternoon, Mayor Biz, Clerk Mendoza, members of the council, City Manager Stowe. Again, congratulations to the new council members. My name is Edgar Kano, I'm the Public Works Agency Director. I'm going to give a quick overview. One thing I do want to point out is that in your packet, if you're following along in your binder, you should have 27 slides, don't worry. This is a third of that, and I'm going to go through them fairly quickly. So Public Works is responsible for maintaining and improving Evanston's infrastructure and public spaces, and providing water to our community members as well as our wholesale customers. Our mission is to enhance the quality of life for all community members and visitors, and providing reliable, efficient, equitable, and sustainable public services to make Evanston the most livable city, which I know it's something we all strive for. Here's a quick overview of our organizational chart. We are a large department, budgeted positions, we have 175.5 full-time positions. We are broken down into three bureaus, bureaus of public services, Bureau of Capital Planning and Engineering, and our Water Production Bureau, which I'll be touching on. Pardon me. Our Public Services Bureau is our largest bureau. The Bureau Chief is Mr. Noel Rodriguez. I'm happy to say that we got a new position of Manager of Field Services, which Kevin Johnson, who used to be our recycling supervisor, was able to step up in the role. He is an employee with over 35 years' experience and dedication to our great city. Public Services is responsible for maintenance of city streets, alleys, and sidewalks, also forestry refuges, recycling, traffic maintenance, greenways. We help with parks, maintaining the beaches in the parks. I won't go through what every division does, it is in your packets. Couple other things that we do in other key positions are Public Services Coordinator, that's Emily Okalau. She pretty much deals with all the tree-related items that are on the public property in the city's right-of-way. Angela Leverneer is our new private tree preservation coordinator. She deals with all private tree matters and assists our forestry department. Brian Zimmerman, who's our solid waste coordinator, is doing great, helping manage our waste contracts. He's also doing a lot to encourage education and public engagement when it comes to solid waste. We do have a great team. One of the things that isn't included in this slide is also our Project Management Supervisor. His name is Mr. William Reed. He's in charge of our annual maintenance programs, which includes our pavement marking, our annual patching program, crack sealing, and pavement rejuvenation, and he is also our nighttime snow commander. Our second bureau is led by our City Engineer and Bureau Chief Laura Biggs, with the help of Assistant City Engineer Chris. He has, he joined the city last year and is just doing a tremendous job for us. The Bureau of Capital Planning oversees and manages all CIP projects, infrastructure owned by the city, that includes streets, water mains, buildings, parks. They are divided into six areas. I won't go through them, there it is in your packet. And then our last bureau here, which is led by Bureau Chief Darryl King, is our Water Production Bureau. They operate the water treatment plant, including billing, and are responsible for the maintenance of our city water and sewer infrastructure. So the five divisions, I will point out, billing, that's not only for the city, our retail customers, but also for our wholesale customers, and then filtration pumping, water distribution, and sewer. I won't go through all these initiatives, but I think the ones that you might get the most calls on or have questions on would probably be the lead service line replacement, which is important. Our sidewalk program, annual program, we got rid of the 50/50 program and went into a new one where now the city pays for everything, but we're doing it through seven phases. Also pedestrian safety, they get a lot of requests for new crosswalks and overall traffic calming efforts. Also our ADA improvement and compliance that we have to do. This is the final slide. As always, I do want to remind everyone to direct all service requests to 311s. Anything you can do to help constituents, our community members, just themselves, contact 311 would be a good, a big help for us. It gets them comfortable with reaching out themselves and making sure that we're able to track all that information. We're huge on data. It helps us, I know Sue was talking about this earlier, but it does help us not only with our budgeting, but, you know, prioritizing which roads, which parks, things like that need to be handled with first. And then the last thing I do want to say is thank you for your continued support and vision. I truly mean it when I say anything we do wouldn't be possible without you, and the reason I say that is you're the ones that are approving all of the new equipment, all of the new technology, all of the new gear, safety projects, that not only help our community, but also help our staff. So thank you very much.
Well, you did not match Chief Stewart's record, but you, you finished just under the wire of the allotted time. And Chief Stewart's gone, so she must have, you know, been in a hurry to get somewhere. Thank you very much, thanks to the whole team for all of this information, and thanks to everyone for participating in this morning's session. Looking forward to seeing everybody on Monday evening. And now we have call of the wards, Councilmember Hatakakis.
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Kelly.
No report.
Councilmember Harris.
Ward meeting, May 13.
Councilmember Isles.
Nothing to report yet.
Councilmember Newsma.
Ward meeting, May 6th. Robert Crown, 7 o'clock.
Councilmember Zephyrden. Councilmember Davis.
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Rogers.
No report.
And with that, seeing nothing further on the agenda, the, who even knows? Ah, I know, the May 3rd meeting of the City Council stands adjourned.